I'd like to call the school board business meeting for August 10th to order. Please, Barb, would you call the roll?
Certainly, Board Chair Hepner.
Here.
Vice Chair O'Loughlin.
Here.
Treasurer Lehman.
Here.
Clerk Pelletier.
Here.
Director Pearson.
Here.
Director Patachak.
Here.
Director Stivland.
Here.
You have quorum.
Thank you. Would you please stand for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our district mission statement, Mike?
Gladly. The mission of Stillwater Area Public Schools in partnership with students, family, and community is to develop curious individuals who are active, engaged leaders in an ever-changing world by challenging all students as they travel along their personalized learning pathways.
Thank you. And our school board goals, Shelley?
Goals for 2016-2017. As board members, we are morally and legally responsible for an equitable and quality education for each and every student in our district. As board members, we ensure decisions are made in the interest of all students, E21, and for future generations impacted by our actions. Goal one, we will partner with administration to assure all students are provided equitable opportunities to reach their maximum potential. Two, participate in efforts that support student and community engagement. Three, direct district efforts to develop a balanced budget for 2017-18. And four, exercise effective self-government.
Thank you. Before we approve the agenda tonight, if there's no disagreement, I would like to move action item A to C and move action item C to A. Just move those around. They remain as action items, but just switching spots. So if there's no opposition to that, could I get a motion to approve the agenda with that change?
So moved.
So moved down here and a second down there. All in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Thank you. We have one introductory item tonight, and I'll turn things over to the superintendent for that.
Thank you. This evening, we'd like to ask two people who have joined our leadership team, Dr. George Nolan and Amy Bergy, to come forward and have a conversation with you. Dr. Nolan has had various administrative positions, first in St. Cloud, working as an equity coordinator, vice principal, dean, and then moved to Robinsdale, Minnesota. Well, he's also worked in Brooklyn Center, but most recently was the principal of Robinsdale Middle School. And he is known for building community and consensus, nurturing diversity, improving outcomes for our students. And so we are excited to have him join our team, and I'll have him talk to you in just a minute and tell you a little bit more about himself. And then we also have Amy Bergy. And Amy comes to us from the assistant director position for early childhood in Hastings, where she oversaw over 80 teachers and parent professionals, and was known for her outreach to collaborate with the community and support community relationships. And she also lives in our district. So I'll have each of them share a little bit with you about themselves and then have some time for questions.
Thank you.
Good evening. Yes, Dr. Nolan, I've been a head principal for about seven years. I was three years in St. Cloud as assistant principal in Minneapolis. Got my doctor from North Dakota. Have three boys. And one, we just sent off to college for football. And then I have a young one, and I'm excited about being here and working and helping and supporting students the best way I can.
Good evening. I'm Amy Bergy, as you know, and I started out in early childhood special ed and have continued a career in special ed with a special emphasis in early childhood. I've spent the last three years in Hastings as assistant director of special services there, where I did a lot of different things under that umbrella. I'm very excited to be here in Stillwater, especially with the initiative of getting preschools in all of our elementary buildings. I think that's an exciting time for us. I have two kids, Elizabeth, who's going into fourth grade, and Nolan, who's going into first grade, and both attend Lake Elmo Elementary.
Welcome to the district.
Yeah.
First, any questions, Shelley?
I probably missed, maybe Denise, you said it. What positions are you filling?
Oh, no, I actually missed it on George.
Director of Personalized Learnings.
Okay. And I'm the director of programs for early childhood.
Okay. So Amy will be taking Karen's place from her, Mansky, from her retirement. And then George and Rachel are working together, and George is assuming some of Rachel's responsibilities and Rachel Angeles. So that's kind of how that happens.
Well, we always tell our new teachers when they come for our new teacher lunch that we didn't bring you in here just to do the same old stuff, that we want your ideas and we want the creativity. That's very important when we hire new staff. So certainly, anything you can bring us from your past experiences that has worked well, we hope you'll encourage us to take a look at as we move forward. Others?
Welcome.
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out tonight. Next item on the agenda is the open forum. And if I could read our prologue, Stillwater Area School District welcomes input from citizens as community involvement fosters better decision-making and improved learning experiences for all students. While comments and questions are welcome during open forum, law prohibits the board from discussing concerns about individual employees or students in a public meeting. We will stop the proceedings immediately if employee or student privacy issues are raised and direct the speaker to forward comments regarding individual employees or students to the superintendent. Because we are modeling civil discourse for our community, speakers must present their testimony in a respectful manner. Vulgarity, character attacks, malice, or specific complaints identifying staff or students by name or implication will not be permitted. The board will not deliberate, discuss, or engage in conversation with speakers during open forum. However, the board may ask administration to review the concerns presented. And with that, our first speaker this evening is Carl Blondin.
Thank you, Chair Hepner, Superintendent Pontrelli, members of the board. My name's Carl Blondin. I live in Stillwater, Minnesota. There is nothing wrong with firmly stating political opinions. There is something terrible about making false and defamatory statements about other people in order to promote a political agenda. It is just as terrible to praise and encourage false and defamatory statements for political purposes. On July 25th, I attended a public forum at the Water Street Inn in Stillwater, Minnesota. One of the speakers or presenters at this forum made the false and defamatory claim that at the time of the district's bond sale, an employee of the district issued a check to that employee's spouse without further approval from this board. Everything derogatory that this presenter said about our employee was false. The employee named by the speaker did not write, make out, issue, or cause to be issued a check to the employee's spouse or the employee's spouse's employer, nor did our employee transfer money to the employee's spouse or the spouse's employer, or at any time touch, control, or handle money that was paid to the employee's spouse or spouse's employer. All dispersments of funds from the bond sale and payments made to others were properly and lawfully made by Piper Jaffray, the firm that handled the bond sale pursuant to the contract this board made with Piper Jaffray. Our employee did not handle or disperse any money from the bond sale or pay anyone with proceeds from the bond sale. The presenter's attack on our employee was 100% false. No one could possibly fail to recognize that this presenter's comments were defamatory. All documents related to the bond sale are public data, and any member of the public may read them and see that this speaker's allegations against our employee were on 100% false. Unfortunately, this uncivil behavior did not end with the defamatory statements of this particular speaker. After the public forum, Independent School District 834 Director Sarah Stivland posted a comment on social media stating, quote, "I was really impressed with the great information shared by all presenters," open parentheses, "not surprised, though," exclamation point, close parentheses, smiley face emoji. "You should definitely do this again sometime after school starts." Director Stivland, who is well-educated about how money from the bond sale was distributed, knew that statements made by the presenter attacking our employee were false and defamatory.
Excuse me. Excuse me. I'm just reading that, and what it says is, "We will stop proceedings immediately if employee or student privacy issues are raised."
You banged the hammer on us many times for less than that, George. Come on.
Well, I'm not going to carry on a discussion with you, but since board members are not either employees or staff...
That's what I thought when I said your name, too, babe. You banged the hammer.
I'm not going to bang the hammer. We'll leave it to Carl's judgment. Thank you.
Ms. Stivland, let me make it clear to you right now. False and defamatory statements are not great information. They are false and they are defamatory. Director Stivland abetted what she knew to be inflammatory defamation.
There it is. Okay. Can I have a moment after he's done speaking to just respond briefly to what he's saying?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
If I may continue. Director Stivland abetted what she knew to be inflammatory defamation, defamation that could well have a serious negative impact on our employee's reputation and financial position. I pointed out to Director Stivland that this particular presenter made false and defamatory statements about the ISD 834 employee. Director Stivland has so far refused to distance herself from the false and defamatory statements. Director Stivland's conduct is well outside of what we as a community consider to be civil. Director Stivland's partisan support of a person defaming a district employee creates a hostile work environment and exposes this district to legal liability. This board should do two things. First, the board should issue a statement supporting our employee in condemning the speaker for false and defamatory statements about our employee. Second, Minnesota law allows school boards to remove members for proper cause. Let me suggest that proper cause includes a director abetting and encouraging false and defamatory statements about district employees. It is proper cause for two reasons. First, we as a community do not tolerate bullying or defamation. Second, we can ill afford a board member who puts a public treasury at risk by praising and encouraging false and defamatory statements. Director Stivland's statements and behavior are beyond the pale of what we as a community to be civil.
Thank you, Carl. Your time is up.
If I could just...
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Carl, as much as I do actually appreciate your taking the time to be here because I value community engagement, probably right up at the very top of my values in terms of my role here. I really appreciate you coming here and stating that. I do have a couple of responses I would like to share, though. Number one, the comment that you're referring to was on a very closed, small-group site that I don't think hardly anybody else has seen, and I have since removed the comment that you listed in your statement. So that's done. I did respond, okay? Number two, the hostile work environment that you're describing does not arise from my being here or anything that I have said or done. It arises from decisions that were made by this board before my time here. So the hostile work environment is related to the nature of our community right now and the situation that we're in, okay? It really has not that much to do with my words that I'm saying today, or yours, for that matter. Number three, I have freedom of speech. Even as I sit here on the board and represent our district, I still am an American citizen. I have freedom of speech. I have the freedom to attend whatever rallies or town hall meetings or other kinds of community events. I have the right to do that, and so does everyone else up here on this board, as do you and everyone else in this room. And I value that very, very highly. Freedom of speech is a very, very important part of our American democracy. And finally, I would like to say that the facts you're raising regarding the particular employee and the issues that were raised and the comments that were at that event are continuing to be evolved. I think that everyone has their own kind of set of facts that they're looking at, and there are a lot of different variabilities involved. And I believe that is still one of the court cases that is still out there that is going to be determined at a future date. So I don't really know what the truth is until the courts have decided. That's for them to decide. That's all I have to say.
Okay. With that, to our second speaker, DeeDee Armstrong.
I'm DeeDee Armstrong. I live in Afton. I want to speak briefly about Minnesota Statute 13.01. That's the Minnesota Data Practices Act. It's an act designed to ensure that state and local government records are accessible to the public. This includes all information in any form, written, computerized, recorded, collected, received, maintained, or disseminated. Very few limitations are placed on what data must be turned over upon a data request. So here's why this is important. In one district in Minnesota, Shakopee, the citizens did a data request when the district came up substantially short on funds. The data request was about their superintendent, Rod Thompson. He's well-known now because he was in the news a lot. He was purportedly stealing from the district, which is public money, to his own benefit, allegedly trips to Nashville, TVs, laptops, et cetera. Again, this wasn't uncovered by an audit or by the local paper, our Gazette counterpart, or by the board. It was a citizen data request. Now the FBI is involved in that case. But back to Stillwater. I know we have done a lot of data requests. I have been one who's done plenty of data requests. I do these and will continue to do so because, A, it's my right, and B, it creates transparency. It creates accountability. But when requests from May are still unfulfilled, it feels deceptive, and it feels like there's stuff being hidden, and it doesn't build trust. When the response is that there are lots of data requests, and then those need to be passed through legal counsel, it raises red flags about transparency. I know that we have a lot of data requests, but really, in today's day and age, it's not like we're having to dig through tons of little papers. We have computers, and they do that stuff, and then, shoot, there they are. It's not complex. So I'm hoping that you, as a board and as a leadership team, can take steps to address the expediency of data requests because May 24th for a data request, and today is August 10th, seems maybe not a reasonable amount of time. Thanks.
Thank you. Consent agenda this evening, minutes of the July 13th, '27 school board meeting, minutes of the July 27th, 2017 school board meeting, the dispersment register from July 21st through August 3rd, 2017, the human resources personnel report, and the twin city transportation agreement. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Could I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Thank you. We have two reports this evening. The first is the special education study results. Mr. Lee?
Good evening, Board Chair Hepner, Superintendent Pontrelli, and board members. It's my pleasure to be here this evening and have this opportunity to share some of the work that we're doing within Student Support Services to better support our students and families and develop their skills as they move through our system. So what I'd like to start with is, last fall, early winter, really under the guidance of Superintendent Pontrelli, we began a process to look deeply into our Student Support Services programming, and particularly in the area of special education. What we did is we designed a, and I've had opportunity in the past to share with you a bit as we've gone through the process, but we designed a large-scale study that had really three phases to it. The first phase focused on looking at all of the data that we have currently and existing over probably the last five years, and information with input from parent surveys that we've done in our services, to other stakeholder group information that we've gathered. And we've had a couple of different studies and consultants and things that have come in during different times, looking at real specific parts of our programming and services. So we wanted to take a close look at those pieces. The second phase really was to look at our current, kind of our current status, our current position within Student Support Services. And to do that, what we decided to do is bring in an independent evaluation team to work with our staff and our team to look at some particular areas of focus. And with that, you have in your board materials tonight the final report from the Holt Consulting Group. And they're the group that did that Phase Two part of our study. And that's really what I'm excited to share with you tonight is really walk through some of the highlights of their report, some of the key takeaways, and then some of the recommendations that they've shared with us that we'll move right into action planning on regarding our support and services. But I want to make sure I mention the third phase of our programming services. And that's really around taking all this information and working with stakeholder groups and with parents and our staff, really set out kind of our action plan over the next year or two, and how we're going to improve the outcomes for our students with special education, with students with disabilities. So that's the real exciting educational work, making sure that we are designing our systems, providing interventions, providing the curriculum, providing the staff development, that is really going to produce the high-level outcomes that we want and we expect for our students with disabilities. So as you see here, the main purpose for the full evaluation project is really to look at the effectiveness of our programming and services, and how we can use those, where our strengths and weaknesses are, to ultimately improve the delivery of services to reach our outcomes. The study that was kind of that independent look, almost like an audit of our programming done by the Holt Group, really focused on two main areas. One was the demographics and kind of descriptive trends that we've seen over the last 10 years, five years, with our programming. And the second piece is looking kind of from that fiscal lens of our staffing and how we're spending our money and allocating our resources. So the reason why this component and these phases are important to our process is really around how we want to systematically organize change within our programming and services to best need our students. This part of the study that I'll talk about with the Holt Group really focused on developing this shared understanding. And that's really important, that we have a shared understanding of what is our current reality, what's our current status. And then, once we have that understanding, we can then develop the recommendations in the programming services to move into action and move forward into choice-making and then implementing our program changes over time as part of that continuous improvement process that we're engaged with. A little bit on procedure. Last fall, we developed, we put together a study, special education study task force. That task force met about monthly. And that task force was made up of parents, teachers, special education and general education teachers, school psychologists, speech pathologists. We had several principals from different grade levels, and other district administrators were part of that group. The other group that was involved with this study was our Special Education Parent Advisory Council. That's a group that meets about four times a year. And that group, really what I did was I was sharing the journey as we kind of went along with that group. And those are actually two groups that we'll be looking at, again, as we start moving into implementation and designing action steps. We're going to be bringing those stakeholder groups together in the future to really look at that and design that. So that's kind of part of that key group. And actually, the study task force is meeting on Monday. So we look forward to that. And that's really their first time of really digging into this, the Holt Consulting Group report. We'll be really analyzing that and pulling that apart and looking at that as a task force group. The other part, as I've mentioned, is the Holt Consulting Group. And they've had an opportunity to meet and present with you at a learning session, but just for the rest of the audience, really, the Holt Group consists of three main professionals. One is George Holt, who's the former head of really special education finance for the Minnesota Department of Education. The other was Barbara Truline, who is the former, recently retired, special education director for the state of Minnesota, working with the Minnesota Department of Education. And the third is Carol Holkinson, who's also from the Minnesota Department of Education, and is really kind of a data, very professional within the data analysis and data reporting systems for special education. So I'm going to really highlight some of the key findings from the report, and you have the full report, but I think these are ones that are important to highlight. Over the last five years, Stillwater resident enrollment overall in the district has declined by 1.5%. And the students receiving special education services has increased over that same five-year period from 12.21% to 14.16%. So we're in a situation in which we have our overall enrollment going down and our special education enrollment going up. The district, the percent of students who receive special education services within the district is comparable to the state. The state average is 15.12, so a little bit below that. But this is a trend we're seeing in most districts in Minnesota and the state as a whole, is this growth in the number of students that we're serving in special education. Over the last 10 years, there has been a significant increase in the students, number of students identified in three particular areas. We've seen, we're experiencing an increase in students identified as other health disability, and those are students that have medical diagnoses that impact their learning. One of the big groups in that area is our students with Attention Deficit Hyperactivity Disorder, and then some, you know, multiple other disorders that fall into that that impact their learning. The other place that we've seen real significant increase, really over the last 10 years, we've seen 123% growth in the students that are identified with autism spectrum disorder, which is very significant. We had 114 students identified in that 10 years ago, and we now have 254 that we're serving under that category.
Yeah. What might be the reason? Are we just identifying, better at identifying, or do we actually have more kids with autism?
My opinion is both, that we've become much more sophisticated in how we identify those students. The spectrum has grown over the years, over 10, 15 years of the students that they've been able to identify that have that kind of neurological base challenges and difficulties. So the definition has expanded to reach more students. I think a lot of the research shows that there is, even when you control for that, there is an increase in students that are developing with an autism spectrum disorder.
So how do we compare to our other districts in the study with our increases in autism spectrum disorder? Are we kind of, is it across the board, a similar type of increase?
Absolutely. Yep. It would be a very similar increase.
Paul?
Yeah.
One more question before we move on in response to Shelley's question, too. And you and I had talked a little bit about this. The identification process, kids are being identified at younger ages now, is having special needs. Is that factored in that study or is that yet to come?
We will be talking about that a little bit more, but yeah, definitely, we are identifying more students earlier that have developmental needs, developmental, we call it developmental delays, but that are developmental components. So much earlier on, even at age birth up, and certainly we're capturing kids that fall within the autism spectrum disorder at that level. fall within the autism spectrum disorder at that level.
The good news is, by dealing with them at a younger age is long-term. It's like almost any weakness, flaw, illness, the idea of turning it around has a better chance.
Absolutely. Yeah. Early intervention is very, very important. So the more that we can do that, the more we can get our educational services to students that the younger, the younger they are, the more opportunity we have for working and supporting the families and working with the families in helping those young people develop and grow and be ready for school when they enter our pre-kindergarten programs.
Thank you.
The other area that has shown significant increase in Stillwater, well, really is in this developmental delay. It's this, you'll see on the thing there, on the presentation, that's that early childhood special education group of students have that. The one thing that, you know, it kind of speaks a little bit to the increase in ASD, but I think impacts actually the other health disability and the autism spectrum disorder is that we have experienced over this same 10-year period, a decrease in the number of students that we've identified with emotional behavioral disorders. I think maybe some of those kids, if you look kind of as a trend of why that might be some, early intervention is probably supporting and helping. Also, some of those kids may have been kind of maybe misdiagnosed into an emotional behavioral disorder, when really they fall into the autism spectrum. So that might be part of that increase in autism spectrum as well, is that there's some shifting, and maybe some more specificity in the kind of diagnostic process to get them into that service. So the other piece here is important to share is, during this same 10-year period, we've seen a significant increase in the age of the students, as Mike referred to, of the students that we're identifying needing support through special ed services. There are students from age zero to two, has increased by 146% over the last 10 years. And part of the reasoning behind that is that the state, many years ago, five, six, seven years ago, they really put an effort into a program called Watch Me Grow. And it's a program that really helps and supports the medical community and families reach out and find those students and get the resources from school districts. So that's been part of that, that big increase in those early childhood programming and services. The other big area of increase that we've seen is in our kids receiving services in the ages 18 to 21 programming. So it's kind of either end of that spectrum. So there's students that are finishing four years of high school but need additional support and services, particularly in the area of vocational skills, post-secondary educational skills, and in life skills or independent skills. Those students that have those needs, we continue to support and work with them directly up to age 21.
That program that you referenced, does that have a funding component that comes from the state? Because I know with a lot of the unfunded mandates, that's what's contributed to this growing disparity and the growing gap of our cross-subsidy. So I was just curious if any state funding accompanied that particular mandate, that Watch Me Grow, the one that you had mentioned?
Yeah, and I'll correct that. It's Help Me Grow is the actual name of the program. So, yes, well, in some ways, yes. I mean, and Kristen could probably speak to this better than I, but those students that we identify as early as, you know, infants up to, you know, age five, in that area of developmental delay, we receive like full kind of ADM tuition from the state for those students. So they're really looked at as a, any of our general ed students of third or fourth grader, we get that full aid from the state for that student. Now, what we do know with this cross-subsidy, and we're going to talk a little more about those issues and where we're at with that, is that, you know, the general ed aid does not provide enough resources to provide the services for students with disabilities. So, yes, in a way, yes, there's some funding for those students, but with all special ed services, there's not enough, you know, from the state or federal revenue for that. So, all right. One of the other key findings from the study was that, and it's connected there, is that we had, what we did, and I didn't mention it, it was on the earlier slide, we had six districts that we were using as comparative districts for the study. And of those six districts, we had the lowest four-year graduation rate of our students with disabilities, at a percentage of 40.74% of our students graduate after four years with disabilities. The one part about that, though, is that we also have the highest percentage of those comparative districts of students that continue into 18 to 21 transition programming, at 43.21%. So they're not graduating after four years, but we're continuing to work with them for up to 21, up to six years and even beyond for some students. So when you look at that, after six-year graduation rate, our six-year graduation rate is at just under 70%, which is right at the state average for six-year graduation rates.
So do we know what the other districts, Farmington I see has a fairly high number, Elk River's got a fairly high number. Do we know what they're doing so that those kids are graduating in four years, or what we're not doing?
Yeah. That's definitely an area that we're going to have kind of an action plan on that, of getting that graduation rate up. And what other districts do to have a higher four-year graduation rate is that they really have some real specific programming in those three areas of transition, starting in ninth grade. And they have pathways for those students to work on those skills, develop those competencies within those areas, so that by the time they're a senior, they've had the opportunity to learn those skills. And that's where they're getting up into that 65% four-year graduation rate. And I think that's an opportunity for us as well. I think our students, many of our students, with some real specific programming in which we design, what we'd like, what we're planning on doing, is designing a portfolio system for every student with a disability, starting in grade nine. We assess their skills in those three areas, establish what the outcome standards are that we would like them to reach by that time they're a senior, so that they're ready for their next step, be it community college or the workforce. Establish what those standards would be, and then design a portfolio and the learning opportunities for them to work and develop their skills within those standards and meet those outcomes by the time they're a senior, and real specifically.
So it'd be more strategy, you're saying, than it would be cost? I mean, rather than put more money on the table, what we really need to do is take a look at the strategies that we're using, starting in grade nine? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes. And it's a, it would be a shifting of resources to some extent. And we will have to look at some of those challenges. There might be a few little challenges in that. I'll just give an example. Some high schools have several work-experienced teachers and job coaches on staff, that actually, when you're a junior or senior, you might go out to a job site as kind of an internship, and you actually have a job coach that goes out and coaches you and supports you. So in a lot of ways, we can, we have, and we'll talk about this a little bit too, we have wonderful pair of professionals in the district, and some of those we could shift into and do the training that's needed for them to be like a job coach, and then design the opportunities for kids to go out and do that. So there's some shifting of resources in that way. There'll be some staff development and some costs like that, that we would want to do to support that, but.
Yeah. A question I have, and it's related to George, and you and I have talked about it a little bit. According to my understanding of the laws governing special education, a child can stick around till they're 21. If they achieve graduation, but the parent feels they're not ready to leave the educational institution, what happens?
So...
Does that make sense?
It does. So the kind of technical way to look at that is that after their, after four years of high school, after their senior year, a student needs to demonstrate through their IP that they still have goals that they need to meet in the areas, those three areas of transition, vocational, post-secondary education, and independent living. If they have needs, continuing needs in those three areas, beyond what we, again, have established as kind of a baseline for those skills, then yes, they have a, certainly a right, an opportunity to continue into 18 to 21 transition services. If they've met all those goals and objectives, then it's not just a parent's choice. They've met the graduation requirements and their transition skills. And so we like to give them their graduation, their diploma, and support them as they move on in their, the next step. So it is really based on if they have that continued need. Now, parent input into that continued need is extremely important. So yes, parents have a lot of voice in that, and they really work with us as a team to identify, you know, what those needs are.
Yeah. And Paul, it would seem to me that it's a little bit more complicated and complex, because as you said, the rate right now is in the 40%, 43% or so. So realistically, if you could increase that 60, 70%, that may, may be as high as you go, because some of those kids, unfortunately, cannot, according to their IP, reach that by the time they're chronologically 12 graders.
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. And then our goal is definitely to get them ready and have the skills, you know, to, you know, graduate, you know, in six years. You know, by the time they're 21, make sure that they're leaving our system with those skills that they need to be successful and bridge that time into adulthood.
But what governs it eventually is the IP.
Absolutely. Yep. And the IP process, yep.
Well, it seems to me that the problem may be is that in this area, you don't want to look like you're forcing people out in four years, because it could be conceded that, you know, you're doing so to save money, because now they're out of the system, you're not spending the resources where they may not be necessary, necessarily ready to leave in four years. And so why, why is there the goal of four years? And why wouldn't we be happy that in six years, we get them ready, they needed that extra two years? What's the advantage of four years, other than you're saving money because they're out of your system now? Is there, I mean, for me, I just can't rationalize why four years is important, other than it's just saving money, which doesn't seem to me to be always the best thing to look at.
I would say it really comes down to that group of students that... So for many of our students with disabilities, you know, they have goals, and they would like to, you know, again, continue with their same-age peers and graduate with their peers and move on to post-secondary opportunities, kind of along with their peer group. So it's kind of that select group that maybe hasn't had the opportunity to do that, because we haven't had systems in place for them to meet those transition goals. So I think that's really would be the basis of it, is, you know, we really want all of our students career-ready and college-ready by the end of their senior year. But certainly those students that have the continued need, it's, again, it's not that high motivation to graduate them all, because it's very important services that we provide from 18 to 21.
But again, to say what you said earlier, a work-experienced coordinator or faculty member in other districts has helped improve that process, to better reach more independent learning, or less dependent learning.
Right. Yes, that's correct. And so we, yeah, and we find that most districts are kind of up in that 60, 65%. And so I think there's a sector there that we have an opportunity to help them get to that level after four years, so. So the recommendations that came, again, highlighted around this area demographics from the whole group, one is to develop strategies to retain resident students from enrolling out of the district and attract more non-resident students. That just supports the overall balance between students with disabilities and students that receive services through our general education programs. The other piece is what we've had a nice discussion on at this point, is looking at enhancing our transition services, starting in grade nine, giving those opportunities for post-secondary education experiences, vocational experiences, and the independent living training that students may need to be, to be ready to graduate in four years with their same-age peers. Moving on to a little bit of the fiscal side of the report and some of the key findings, what we found in the study was that the costs have increased, especially transportation, by about 15% over the last five years. But compared to the other school districts, this is, they experienced much larger increases over the same period. And this was a key finding, that they were like, your special ed transportation is very, very strong and very solid in the way in which it's designed and programmed for students with disabilities. The other area is that, talking a little bit about the cost and the cross-subsidy, when we talk about the cross-subsidy, it's the unreimbursed cost of providing special ed services for students with disabilities. So the special education costs have increased by 11% over the last five years in Stillwater.
Can I just ask really quickly? Does that transportation cost come out of that? Is that part of special ed expenses, or is that a transportation cost?
There's reimbursement for special ed transportation through the state. It doesn't fully reimburse us for all costs in transportation for students with disabilities. So there is, there's a percentage of that that would be supported by the general ed fund as well.
Okay.
So the percentage of general fund that goes towards the unreimbursed cost for special ed has increased from 7.46% to 12.67% over the last five years. Now, the average cross-subsidy of comparison districts was, they found it to be 12.55%. So we're experiencing the same type of increase and impact of the cross-subsidy as our other comparative districts of like size and of the area. And the Stillwater schools are very close to the average cross-subsidy that they found kind of statewide. Again, we're not unique in the challenge of meeting the needs of students without receiving the type of reimbursement that I think we'd all like to get from the state and from the federal government.
Paul, when they figure the cost of special ed, are they looking at everything from your position, due process, pair of professionals? They're looking at every...
You're right. Correct. Everything that's coded to special education. And in the report, you'll see that they make a comment that 94% of that cost is staff.
Okay.
It's people. So the recommendations that came out of the report regarding the cost, the cost is really, they found, and that we're capturing as much, we're doing a very good job of capturing the money that we can through the way in which we do tuition billing, and the way in which we code our special ed students to receive the revenue from the state and from the federal government under IDA. So where the recommendations land is how can you generate more revenue in other programs? So one is, they brought up the idea of the recommendation to really look at our application for educational benefits under students that might be eligible for free and reduced lunch. You'll see in the study that they found that of the comparable districts, we have the lowest poverty rate, which is based on, from an MDE perspective, is based on those two things, free and reduced lunch applications, or students, or children that are eligible for those services. And so we're, we have the lowest poverty rate of those districts. And they felt that there are, there could be some opportunities to capture more students. And they go through some other, some recommendations on how we might do that. And that does impact title funding, but it also impacts our special education funding a bit. We could, with the higher poverty rate, not higher poverty, but really capturing all those students that would qualify for that level of service, it would actually generate a little more revenue in special education funding.
So it's not just lunch?
No.
Is what you're saying?
And it's not saying that these students who qualify, they don't, they're not considered necessarily special education. It's just that you get an additional amount when you have a higher number.
Right.
Okay.
Well, it's the representation of poverty. That's what free and reduced symbolizes. And so whether it's title or whatever, you have more eligibility for more public assistance.
Yeah. Absolutely. And there, yeah, and so the recommendations, just, you know, see if there's opportunities there to make sure we're gathering all of that opportunity to, for that assistance for those students.
Paul, is there any breakdown on that in terms of elementary kids? It seems like typically has higher participation. Secondary kids are, for a combination of reasons, less likely to apply for or be identified for assistance. or be identified for assistance?
I would have to get that data and, and look at that, but I'm sure that we have that available because we, you know, keep track of those students that, or at least the numbers of students that are eligible under that, so. The, the second area is around enhancing our MA billing for eligible medical, necessary IEP-related services. So, MA billing for many, for medical services and some other OT services in some areas, we, we actually bill the Department of Human Services for those services and we get reimbursement for those services that we provide. Currently, we, we bring in about $250,000 in our MA billing, but there are opportunities for us to, we provide more services that could be billed than we're currently billing. So, that's one of the recommendations is to really look at enhancing and making sure that we're, we're doing the billing process for all the students that are eligible for that. And so, that's in the recommendations and we've already put some things in place to start addressing that. So, in the recommendation, one was to hire a full-time position to do third-party billing and hire a position to collect and review data to ensure accurate tuition billing rates and state special education aids. So, they're recommending just a little more resources in that, in that support area in those. As far as our staffing goes, what they found was that we actually have our, our ratio of special education students to licensed special education teachers is about 17.5 to 1. And this is the highest ratio of the, of this, of the five, six comparison districts. And over the last five years, the ratio of special education students to licensed special education staff has increased from 15.74 to 17.5. Now, with that said, what you, what they also found in the study, when they did some survey information and they went out to the schools and they did some interviewing and, and some components like that, their findings was that they felt that the staff was well-balanced, meaning the, the licensed staff that we have in particular areas, our licensed ASD teachers, our licensed developmental cognitive delay teachers, our people licensed in specific learning disabilities was well-balanced. We have a balanced staff as far as expertise in those areas. And that, well, they did find one exception, which is in the area of ASD, that they recommend that we hire more ASD licensed teachers. And that has to do with that growth in our ASD students. This is a challenge for all districts and particularly districts in the state of Minnesota. They just can't train enough people to meet that need and getting people adjusting their licensure to have that expertise. However, we do have a really strong group of teachers in that area. And I believe this year, moving into this year, we do have a licensed ASD teacher, special ed teacher in every one of our buildings. That was something that was very purposeful in the way we designed our, our systems with our buildings going into next year. And they also, in the study, they, they, they felt that the teacher and related service staff caseloads fell into a reasonable range and the consultants found no major concerns regarding workload. They did a kind of a quick, a mini file review of some of our IEP and our compliance and our due process. Their findings were that they felt that our, our files were very well-organized across the buildings. They felt that the presence and information they received from staff regarding our due process clerical staff that we have in all of our buildings were supportive and supported our due process, our compliance and supported the teachers in some of those kind of clerical tasks that in the past they've had to, to do themselves. Now, they have clerical support to set up meetings and to do filing and those sort of things to keep our, our paperwork in good order, which is very important in special ed. The consultants also observed that our progress reviews were completed in a timely manner for our, for our families and our staff and our students and that the evaluations that they sampled were complete and were completed within the last three years. So, they didn't find any major concerns with that. So, under recommendations from the study, they felt that we should be providing, they recommended that we provide staff development in the area of standards-based IEPs and due process requirements ongoing, provide disability-specific training in the areas, particularly of ASD and OHD for both teachers and paraprofessionals, recruit and attract teachers with ASD licensure, which we've mentioned here earlier, increase time for the behavior specialists that we have in supporting our, our teachers and students, develop an internal committee to, to study workloads and alternative service delivery models to support the needs of students. And then building time into schedules so that special education staff, paraprofessionals, related service providers like school psychologists and speech-language pathologists are really able to meet and collaborate on an ongoing basis regarding each, each and every student, that that collaborative processing is, is very important to the growth of, of each student.
Paul, before you go on to the next slide, how far away are we on that third one out there in terms of ASD? It talks about one per building.
Yeah, we have, yes. So, going into this, this year, we do have one licensed ASD teacher or ABS licensed teacher in every building. And so, they're appropriately licensed to serve students with ASD. We have some buildings that I think we could use more ASD teachers in, but we definitely have every building covered with a licensed ASD teacher.
Okay. Ideally, what would you like to see it to be then? And when you say, you know, a couple more that we'd like to see, or haven't you thought that far?
I don't know if I've thought that far. I, you know, I, we definitely will, it's, it's, they're highly recrutable when we find them and they're qualified and strong candidates, we, we get them as soon as we can. We also really need to look at developing and through Kathy Moynihan, I have talked a bit, but looking at are there some incentives or some ways in which we can encourage our current staff to go back to school to get that licensure and to get that expertise? There's some, there's some ways in which I think we could encourage some of our staff to do that. So, I would say we, you know, we'd like to have at least two in every building. We have some specialty ASD programs, our site-based programs that, you know, are fully, those are ASD specialists in those programs that we have. But it's certainly an area that I think every special ed teacher, if you're coming up the ranks, it would be very, very wise to have that licensure just because, you know, as you know, ASD students, there's such a range. Some of them need very little services, you know, on a day-to-day basis, but they're integral within the building. So, our special ed teachers are, all of them, regarding their, disregarding their licensure, are always working with ASD students to some extent in their programming.
So, do we try to contact, I don't know, University of Minnesota, St. Thomas, somebody like that and say, you know, we'll get a cohort of teachers and you come out? I mean, I think to make that as easy as possible for those teachers at the end of the day, I mean, then there's the incentive of, do you give salary, salary credit, you know, however you're going to do that?
Right.
But I, I think there are so many schools now doing that cohort model. And if we've got X number of special ed teachers, could we say to them, you know, if we can get 10, would you be willing to send your teachers out here to? I mean, it seems to me there's, if this is really important to us, we should be getting a hold of those schools and saying, how do we work together to, to do that? Have we looked?
Absolutely. Yeah. And I know there's some opportunities like that and I know the universities are, you know, very willing to partner with districts to establish that type of cohort-type work, so.
And, and I'm sure your acquainted 916 has done that with paras?
Yes, yes.
Because there is a challenge statewide to fill all those roles.
Yep. And that's a really good model to look at and even, you know, consider. They, that focus was really around EBD and making sure we can, you know, meet the need in that area, but ASD is kind of at that same level.
On the other end, and, and I don't know our experience, perhaps you want to address that, 916 has a difficulty filling all their para positions. So, I mean, if you encourage them to go on, which is good thing?
Right, right.
At the same time, to find good paras is a challenge as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yes. Talking about paraprofessionals a little bit, here are the key findings because we really wanted them to look at that a bit. They were very impressed with our paraprofessionals. They felt they're enthusiastic, they're focused on student needs. The paraprofessional cost per student with IEPs is below the average cost of the seven districts in the comparison for our district. The ratio of students with IEPs to paraprofessionals is close to the average of the seven districts. And we have about one paraprofessional for every 7.32 students with disabilities on staff, that's the ratio. And one of the, one of the things they brought up as a challenge is the lack of availability of substitutes for paraprofessionals is an area of concern and it really truly is. It's, it's, for one, it's hard to sometimes recruit paraprofessionals for full-time positions, but when, but our professional subs, it's, it's difficult to, to meet all the unmet needs at times for, for subs in, in pairs. And they're really integral to the day-to-day work with students, so we really need to focus in on that piece for students. And that leads us to the recommendations. One of the recommendations is that they would like us to look at having our special ed paraprofessionals available throughout the whole day and expend their day. We do a little bit of kind of a five-hour para here, a four-hour para there. Some of our paras are split between special education and then they'll, they'll spend an hour, two hours doing playground duty, kind of in a more general education para role. And they're coded that way, so it's a split position. They recommend us really looking at, as far as the, the delivery of services for students, at how we might do that differently. An idea, a recommendation to hire a floater para or two that we have on staff that are maybe, we can place them where the greatest need is when we have paras absent. Make sure that their work is aligned with the IP goals and that, some of that's just professional development and time to work with their case managers that they work with and their teachers. And then really using that resource of the paraprofessionals in preparation for IEP meetings and even having them participate in IEP meetings with families because of, especially for some students in which they're such an integral part of providing accommodations, modifications in different aspects of a child's program. So, I'll move on to next steps and I, I appreciate you allowing me this time to, to, to talk about the study. But our immediate next steps are, we've added staff to support professional development, behavioral consultation, MA billing and our due process requirements. As you know, we've kind of redesigned a position that was a coordinator position and we've hired an assistant director of student support services to support, again, these, these areas. We've hired a health services coordinator or health services supervisor who will support our MA billing processes because much of that is around nursing services and our MA billing. We have actually increased our time of our behavior specialist a little bit. We had him splitting his time doing some work with the Washington Holding Facility, but we've hired a newly-retired teacher. It's going to be wonderful for her to do that, that role for us and, and so we have a full-time behavior specialist. Due process clerical, we've, we've systematically, the last two years, we've added those to our buildings. And now this year, the, the middle schools were the two buildings that didn't have that support. And now this year, we've, we've hired a, a full-time person to split her time between those two buildings. And we have added a little bit of clerical time, again, to support that MA billing process. We're providing paraprofessional training in a very, very systematic way, starting before students arrive. And then we have multiple dates set up throughout the school year to do full, full-day trainings with our paraprofessionals. Again, we're meeting with our task force. Our next step is really on Monday where we get together and really start digging into this data and recommendations and really start putting together what our guiding change is and our documents and what our focus will be. And then assure that, as we talked, that we have an ASD teacher in every building. Over the next, next night?
Before you flip, if you would, can you describe a little bit for us, behavior specialist, what that person does or what's different?
Yep. So, we have one behavior specialist in the district. And what they are is they're available as, as a resource. So, when a student is experiencing or a teaching staff, a team, some challenging behaviors or some new behaviors, they will call our behavior specialist and he will go over. And he typically starts with doing a lot of assessment to figure out what the functions of behaviors are, help them and support them in writing what we call a functional behavioral assessment and developing a positive behavior intervention plan. And those two components are requirements within the IP process for certain students that require that. So, he supports the teams in writing those plans and developing those and then works and models and coaches our staff in different behavioral intervention approaches and techniques with students throughout the district. So, he's a busy, busy guy, but...
Does he cover special schools or does he cover all?
He covers all of them. He's had a real focus on elementary these last years. Now, with a little more time, I, you know, we're hoping that he can, you know, even support up to the high school and he's done some of that as well. In the next, you know, 90 days, we're really putting in systems to enhance our third-party billing system. We want to continue the analysis of the special ed study and move into that phase three that I had mentioned earlier and the action planning and the continuous improvement. I do want to recommend developing a committee to review workload based on our staffing models. I think we're, we're evolving as a staff and, and we're, the, the needs of our students are changing and evolving and I think looking at alternative ways in which we provide services will be important. And then develop a ninth-grade transition assessment process that we've talked about, really look at that with a team and look at what that might look like in that personalized standards portfolio. Develop a plan to teach, teachers to write...
Can I just ask a quick question about that? Would you be likely, in your vision in terms of that ninth-grade portfolio plan, would you be using the current, like, transition staff who kind of have been doing that for the older kids? Just they would be doing it at an earlier age?
Absolutely.
Is that the idea?
Yep, absolutely. And we also have at our, in our high school staff, several instructors that are very, very experienced and, and very strong in this area of transition. So, I, we have the, the expertise. It's, it's putting it kind of together and then making it part of our, our system and process.
Because I think that the concept of what you described sounds really interesting and I think that it might be something that would work for students that have not necessarily been identified and don't necessarily have an IEP, but they maybe want something that's a little bit different.
Yeah.
And I don't know that we have those supports in place right now to help students really navigate something unique and, you know?
Yeah.
Not every kid is the same.
Yeah.
So, it would be nice to have a system in place where we can have a kind of a customized approach, you know, for some students.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah. It's exciting. So, we're, again, we'll work on the standards-based IP piece. We have, we have staff that are very good at writing standards-based IEPs and we just want to make sure that all of our staff have the, have the training that they need to be comfortable with that. And then again, we really want to do a focus on making sure we're training our paraprofessionals to the best of our ability with that piece. So, then over the next 12 to 15 months, we want to increase that high school graduation rate. We've talked about that. We are going to be doing, and it's a requirement, but we're going to be doing a more close due process compliance review of our files this year. We'll continue with staff development with our staff on writing IEPs, developing that person, that professional learning community model for our special ed staff, looking for opportunities for them to make sure that they meet and have those conversations that are important about students. And that can happen discipline-wise, meaning our ASD teachers from early childhood all the way through transition, giving them opportunities to meet and look at how do we align our supports and systems in ASD all the way up the system and do that alignment, along with people that work at a building level with each other to support specific students. So, we look at advancing those practices. And then, you know, really developing the procedures to assure that we're using evidence-based instructional practices and interventions, make sure that they're available and implemented to ultimately reach the desired outcomes for every one of our, our students with disabilities. So, that's the conclusion.
Thank you.
Any questions or thoughts?
That's a lot of really good information.
Yes, thank you.
Could you, and maybe you did this at the beginning, could you just maybe reiterate, what were the original goals, at least maybe in your mind, in, in initiating this study? I mean, I know we've done other studies in the past. We've been looking at special ed for, you know, for a long time. What were some of the things that you were hoping to get out of having this study?
With this particular component, with the, the whole group and the report that you have, it was really the, several things. One was to, a lot of the past studies and things that we've, we've done are, are, a lot of it's perceptual data, which is very, very important. It's, it's how are people experiencing our programs? How are they experiencing our systems and our staff and, and those pieces? And those are really important inputs to look at. We really wanted to... We really wanted to say, let's take an independent look of where do we, kind of where do we stand? You know, are we in line with, kind of fiscally, where we should be? Are we overspending? Are we underspending? Are we spending more of our resources in particular areas and not in other areas? Also looking at our trends of our students, are there things that we're seeing in the demographics of our students, and what are those growth and trends over a long period of time? And there's a lot of data mining of that, and so George and that group, you know, they're pulling data from MDE, and they're doing things that, you know, just is not, we can't do here. And so we wanted to look at those trends of how things are changing, so get a really good picture of who our students are, where are we seeing growth, how do we project what the growth is going to be in the future, and then look at, you know, what are the opportunities to, you know, in that fiscal area to advance that? So, that was kind of the focus of their work.
And can you just tell me, like, how much, was this an expensive kind of proposition to have this survey done? Like, what did we spend to have all this information?
The work, oh boy, I didn't prepare for that question. It was, I believe it was, is it 23? Kristen, no. I believe it was around 23,000.
Okay, that's good to know. We got a lot of really good information.
And I will send that to, I will clarify that, make sure that that's exactly where it was, but it was about 23,000.
Yeah. Well, one of the things that I noticed in the results was that workload question, that seems like over a five-year period, if I did my math correctly, it was about a 10% increase in the workload for our special ed teachers. That seems like a pretty big jump, and I wonder if that's causing a lot of stress on our staff, on our special ed department? I see some nodding in the back.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, and I think what you just said kind of covers a little bit about what you're trying to do already to try to alleviate some of that, but can you speak to that a little bit more, what you think will probably be involved with fixing that?
Yeah. And again, so with that piece, that workload, that's why it's important to pull a group together and really look at it, is that we have to pull that apart a little bit more than what they shared with us. I do believe that we, our staff work extremely hard, and they do have, you know, large caseloads compared to other districts. Now, there's some pieces to that. They also, they found, for example, that our caseloads range from a teacher having six students up to a teacher having 23. So we have a large range of that, and then they took an average in the middle. So we have traditionally put a lot of staffing into our very high-need students and kept those caseloads fairly low, six or eight per student, which is still a lot managing those kids. And then we've really set our, setting one in two teachers around, this caseload of 18 is where that's sat for many years, you know, the last four, five years, it's been about that level. And that's fairly consistent with other districts, that they kind of go at that 18 to 20 for that level, but I think in their information, they're also looking at related service providers, like speech-language pathologists and school psychologists that caseload sometimes. So we have to look a little bit more at that and a little bit closer. But ultimately, you know, we saw in the numbers, our students with disabilities are increasing, the funding is not keeping up, the revenue that we get from the state and from federal government isn't. We've been allocating more of our general fund to support special ed over the last five years. And so it's a, you know, it's a challenge in how we do that.
Yeah, I think part of that, though, is that, you know, as you stated in the very beginning, that, you know, our enrollment of the general population is going down, non-special ed students is going down, but our enrollment of special ed students is staying the same or going up.
Right.
So that's the cause for the increase, probably. And if we were to somehow manage to increase our enrollment of non-special ed students, then that ratio would go back down.
Right.
That would improve.
But I don't think it can be overstated, just how critically important that funding piece is, because we've known for decades, maybe since the inception of FAPE, that the federal and the state-level governments simply have not kept up on their end of the funding.
Right.
And what it summarily does then, unfortunately, is it pits our students against students, because like you said, then it takes away from our general fund dollars, which then takes away from other programming, because it's, we need to serve the students who have specific needs, who are required by law and morally and ethically that we want to serve to the best of our ability. So I think that funding piece, and just knowing too, that other schools do have an option, if you will, de facto, of students that maybe they cannot serve to the totality that we can, so, you know, there's just that, I think that funding piece is really critical, I think, for people to know about.
Right, absolutely.
How that impacts us.
Yeah. And this I'll gladly share, but I did have the opportunity on Monday to listen to Tom Melcher, who's kind of the guru of school financing, and he shared a lot of slides on a lot of different things. But one of the slides, and I'll give you a copy of this afterwards, and I think you might find it of interest as well, how are we doing on funding adequacy? And he has state and federal aid as a percent of special education cost. Now, what's interesting, if you look at the federal level, and it hasn't kept up, it's actually decreased. In something like 2010, they covered as a percent about 16.6%. In 2021, they're projected, they cover 6.5. So that's almost a decrease of 10%. The challenge always, how do we turn that around? Where do we play a role? State, on the other hand, and that was a little bit of a surprise to me, the state percentage has actually increased. In 2007, by comparison, they picked up about 50%, a little bit over 50.5%. Right now is 63.4%. So I'm saying they've increased, but as Paul says, and it's true, they just haven't kept up as fast as the growing costs have been. Now, if you total that all up, what's covered state and federal aid as a total makes up about 69, really you can round it off to 70%. And that cross subsidy is what the locals have to make up, so that's what we're talking about.
Right.
I have a few questions, I'll try to keep it brief here. Just at the very beginning, you mentioned the advisory groups that you had put together. Are you, in what capacity do you loop back with your advisory group? I think it bothers me a little bit, I've been on a lot of committees, and I've felt like I, these people put a lot of their time into these groups, out of their family life, and, you know, I think personally, sometimes I feel that there's no consistency to the work that they do, and they don't know, you know, what's happening, and not getting like kind of a consistent feedback from the district. So that's kind of my, one of my many, many questions. Second is, Survey Monkey, I think you stated that you, is that right? You did a Survey Monkey? Do I have that right? Like you asked teachers or something about their feelings?
In the past, we've done, you know, different surveys with different applications, but over time...
And do you feel that you've had really good response rates with that, with your...
I think adequate, I mean, some weren't, some weren't very good responses, rates, and we have to kind of factor that into the results. Some of the others, I think we've had adequate.
Okay, okay. I just, you know, and I just want to also commend you on this work. It's wonderful, and I think it gives us all a lot to learn from and see where we, you know, what we're doing well and what we're not doing so well, and how to improve. So that kind of leads me into my last question, which is, you know, how, what is the process for follow-up? Are you, is this going to be like an annual, you know, all right, we have this wonderful information, here's what we need to do, here's how we need to improve, and what are the steps that we're going to take to improve? And then how are we going to relay that back to our families?
Right. So our first step is, you know, as you mentioned, that task force, and they've just been incredible and very dedicated, and they continue to be with this work, and they kind of know the phases, and they're very, they were very anxious, you know, to get the results from the HOLT group, and so we've been able to get that this summer. So we're meeting again on Monday, and part of that will be designing with that group, you know, what does the next year look like as we move into action planning and that work? And there's a lot of things that we've done with that group that I haven't shared that's separate from this whole group's report, to really look at our culture, to look at some components of our history, and some of those components are really important to integrate into this information and data. So we'll be designing that. You know, I would really like to align our programs and services, like each area of our program. For example, the programming services that we provide for K through third grade in the area of reading, in specific reading disability, to really establish what our metrics are as far as our assessment in identifying what that need is, particular areas of need, if it's comprehension, decoding, or those sorts of things, really dig into what that particular student needs, and then making sure we design, you know, as a system, those interventions to really target that skill development, and then progress, monitor them ongoing to their skill development and make changes as needed, and then make sure we, you know, are getting those outcomes that we need, and designing that in a very purposeful way. And so there's some alignment in the way in which the services are provided for our staff and for our families. And so I think there's some, that's kind of the work ahead, is to really look at our systems, and are we getting the outcomes, and how do we best get to those outcomes? And I would like to, you know, have a two-year plan, something we need to talk more about a little bit as a director team, but really establish, this is not a, because of our department and the demands and the complexity, you know, of the different, it gets real specific, real specified, we have a lot of experts in certain areas, that it really takes a, kind of a process to look at our different programs, kind of on a rotating and ongoing basis. You know, as an example would be our assistive technology programming. You know, we need to, we have an assistive technology specialist, part-time, who does that work, but how are we making sure that we're reviewing that ongoing, so we're providing the very best AT services that we can for students? So I would like to have a, kind of a...
And I think in addition to that, the executive reports that you get from all the directors have all those 60, 90 full-year plans about what the plans are and when it's complete and what next steps are. And Sarah and Jen, you've just gotten your first set, but you'll get those every six months. So that's kind of a way to watch the management of things and how things are progressing too.
Yeah.
I really, you know, it's such a, since six, seven months we've been on, it's such a, it's such a personal thing for families, these families, and I've met a few myself already who, you know, it's just, it's a really big deal. So I, and I know that you've personally done a lot of wonderful work for some families, so thank you, and I think this is really good work.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Sure, thank you.
Well, and I just, I won't belabor it, but just to validate that, so as a special education parent myself, I echo what you said about the people, you know, boots on the ground in the trenches, and the work that they are doing to make a difference in the lives of our students and our families. And so I appreciate you taking a critical look and really examining the efficacy in terms of what are the supports that are given to our staff so that they can, so they have the systems in place to best deliver and support our kids, so.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and I probably didn't mention that, I should have mentioned that even more often, that we have exceptional special education staff and special educators here. It's amazing, the work that they do. And in some ways, this study, I think, you know, the parameters and the things that are in the study, they definitely support that. You know, this is not a broken system. This is a very top-notch special ed program here in Stillwater. You know, we want to make it, you know, we're always going to want to improve it, and we want to look at those areas in which we can and do that, but yeah, our staff is exceptional, so I appreciate you sharing that as well.
It seems to me, if we're going to take advantage of this study, and we know we have a strategic plan coming up, what we should probably do is make sure they're aligned so that when we look at your special ed, your special ed study, that it's put together with the district's strategic plan, so we know, unfortunately, as Paula said, this gets measured against this, and if we need, you know, full-time paras, or we need more time for the paras to meet during lunch, that that cost is weighed against whatever another department comes up with for a cost. I just think having those things aligned is kind of important, so.
Absolutely.
Thanks for doing the first steps on this, and thanks for the recommendations and to the whole group for doing that as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
The next thing is the report for the school board's self-evaluation. School board, as you remember, did two things. We did a perception of the board individually, our own self-evaluation individually, and then a board as a whole. And I guess what I do is just read these goals that we have, that we read each meeting, and if you have something that you would like to say based on what you read in the board evaluation as a whole, feel free to comment about that. The first goal is partner with administration to assure all students are provided equitable opportunities to reach their maximum potential, and then I think the next four pages relate to that. So if there's anything in that particular goal you'd like to comment on, we'll take your comments.
I just looked kind of through the weighted averages and noticed that this monitor results policy was our lowest, so maybe we want to look at making sure we make that a priority in the next year. I think from some of the comments, we felt like we just hadn't looked at it very much.
Okay. Any other comments on goal number one? And I should say, before we move on, you know, we're working with Mary Sicconi, I think, August '22 and '23, and she said if you've got specific goal areas you'd like us to take a look at, to send those to her. Goal number two is participate in efforts that support student and community engagement. And that covers pages five through seven, so the three next pages.
I think I'll just add, I think this came up actually at our last retreat with Mary, that being mindful when we're talking about community, that we're including all facets and all parts and all components of our community, and that if we're looking at the 60,000, so to speak, or voters or residents, that we're being really intentional about making sure that we're seeking out voices that we don't always hear.
Couple of these relate to work with legislators, and I think based on what Paul just commented on, I think we need to keep working with our legislators, bring them in, share our perception, and I think we had a good response last year when we had the legislative breakfast, and I think getting that going again this fall would be beneficial. Goal number three is direct district efforts to develop a balanced budget for 2017, '18. That covers pages eight and nine.
I think here, again, we want to work, just keep working on the budget and trying to get as close to balanced as we can.
Okay. And goal number four is exercise effective self-governance strategies.
Again, just, I think, continuing a conversation that we started at the retreat, I think on the continuum in terms of how one defines board governance, I think there's a wide degree and variance that exists amongst this board, and I think it's really important that we have some, that we coalesce around a common definition. that we have some, that we coalesce around a common definition and a common agreement, so to speak, to make sure that if we are going to abide by our policies and the statutes that we've set out, that we have that conversation about what do we mean when we say board governance?
Yeah, I agree with that. I think, you know, even at the MSBA training, I felt like our governance policies are in one area, and we, you know, I, Sarah and I sat in on the training with regards to governance, and I don't think we're on the same page, and I think this is a crucial area that we need to work on as a board and answer some tough questions on how we want to behave and how we want to work in the public and also, you know, amongst ourselves, and I'd love to see us tackle that, so.
Well, I guess I would agree with that, and I think I shared this the last time I met with George, that I think in looking at all of our BGP, the board governance policies, to me, they're way too long and kind of wordy, and a lot of them are unclear and contradictory, and I would just love to start from the very beginning and just really clarify and simplify all of those policies so that they are, so that we do understand what we mean when we say certain things, or when we're working on different projects, different goals. I just feel like we need to be more clear about what our organizational structures really are, and also in line with that, I think this is something we talked about with Mary as well, that just a little bit more involved orientation process for new board members as they come in, I think Paul, or Jen and I both agree that a little bit more information upfront would have been helpful. I still feel like I'm learning, I'll probably continue to be learning as long as I'm up here, but a little bit more information and a more structured orientation process would be, I think, a good idea, and I think that would be in line with all of these other things that we've just talked about. I think we need to clarify our goals to, as a board, which we're going to be doing over the next few weeks with Mary, so I think that's great. I'm very excited about that process.
Okay. Anything else? You have copies of both of them, so read through them and we'll move forward. We did make, there was a presentation at MSBA Summer Seminar about the board evaluation. I think I included some documents in your packet about that, and I can speak to that in board reports later on as well. We've got action items, and the first is the 2017-2018 district handbook.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Chair Hepner, Superintendent Pontrelli, and members of the board. Believe it or not, school is just around the corner. We've been really busy in our office getting all of the communications and back-to-school information together, and one of those is our district handbook. You'll probably remember, for those of you on the board, that we come before you each time this time of year asking for approval. The district handbook is full of information about district policies, required notices, and rights and responsibilities of both our students and parents, and we require that our families do review that and sign off in skyward, letting us know that they have reviewed that and are familiar with this information. So, we want to get that out to our families right around back-to-school time. So, at this time, I'm going to ask for, recommend, or ask for your approval of the district policy handbook, which can be found on our website. You have a printed copy of it as well. I'll answer any questions.
Could I get a motion to approve the district handbook?
So moved.
So, move in a second. Any questions or comments for Krista?
Yeah, I just had one request for consideration. I know that on the first page, it talks, it starts off with parents, and then below it talks about parents and guardians, and it's okay to be consistent with parents and guardians throughout, if that's something that is easy enough to...
That's very easy to fix.
Okay.
I should mention, one of the things we've done this year is we really have made it all online, which makes it really easy for us to go in and make edits to it whenever policies are updated. We don't have to reprint copies and do all of that, so yes, I can go and make that change right away.
Okay, great. And I had another question, Krista, too, and I apologize, I didn't ask this ahead of time. Is this something that the parents can do if they're coming back, let's say, for a back-to-school night or for registration pickup, so if they may not have access online, or if it's difficult for them to obtain it otherwise?
Yeah, I'll check with principals again, but typically there is some sort of computer setup, a kiosk where parents can do this, as well as pay for meals and all of those different things on back-to-school night, but I will take that back to our principals and just make sure that's available again this year.
Thank you.
It's a good idea.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the 2017-2018 district handbook, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Pose.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is the purchase agreement for the transportation terminal. Ms. Hoheisel.
Thank you, Board Chair Hepner, Superintendent Pontrelli, school board members. Tonight, I am asking for your approval of a purchase agreement for property located at 14386 Hudson Road South, Afton, Washington County, Minnesota. This site is 31.41 acres, and it is currently zoned I-1B industrial by the city of Afton. A 10,268-square-foot building has been occupied by Century College Transportation Training Center facility since its construction in 2009. The building is concrete block and steel building constructed with concrete slab on grade floors. The building contains offices, classrooms, restrooms, locker room, laundry room, custodial room with floor sink, utility fire-water room, computer server room, kitchen area, and a garage with four bays and four overhead doors, and I'd like just to clarify, that would be normal vehicle bays, and so they would translate into two bays that would be able to support buses. A second, approximately 832-square-foot building, is located in the southeast corner of this site. This leased portion of the site is 0.5 acres and includes the building utilized by Media One to house cable, telephone, and data relay equipment. Historical information indicates this site was agricultural land from at least 1938 until it was developed for sand and gravel mining in approximately 1964. Sand and gravel mining operations continued until approximately 1987, when the site was initially developed for commercial use. The first known building constructed on this site was Media One, the Media One building in 2000, and the CCTTC, which is the Century College Transportation Facility, was constructed in 2009. The purchase price has met the board parameters from closed session, and so I would ask for your approval at this time.
Okay. Could I get a motion in a second to approve the property purchase agreement for the transportation terminal?
So moved.
Okay. In a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Questions and comments?
I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
I know we talked about this, but I can't remember. Is there, are we anticipating any transportation increase because we're moving south to the southern end of the district rather than near the central part?
When you say transportation increase, Shelley, are you talking additional time on routes?
Money. Will it cost anymore? That's the...
To run the buses out of there?
Right.
I, I don't anticipate having to run additional buses based on the site. We will route coming out of that site.
Okay.
With what that looks like.
And then, go. Did you have more? My second question, is there a change in the tax impact, or this is money that we already have available to use? So, for our taxpayers, will they be responsible for any more than they already are?
No.
Okay.
One thing I'd like to point out, if you delve into the agreement, I noticed it after the fact, after it was in the printer's hands, is there are two sections in the agreement. One is Exhibit E, page 3 of 5, and it essentially says, who do we send communication to and who do we send copies to? This would mimic page 13, so usually communication would come to my office with a copy going to our attorney. Just, it's highlighted in yellow, it just didn't get transferred to that page when this deal was being worked through with the attorneys. And then Exhibit F, page 1 of 2, there's also an highlighted area that says, insert exceptions. There are no exceptions, that will be none, and so that will be removed also.
Mike?
Kristin, several issues that I have with this, I just want to run through those, and if I'm in error, please correct me.
Sure.
And originally, the bus garage was part of the bond issue, and I believe the proposed cost for the bus garage, or the amount set aside, was something like $3.2 million.
$3.5 million.
$3.5, thank you. And again, the justification was that we were paying roughly about $200,000 a year in lease costs yearly. That was our annual cost. Is that about right?
That, that is about right. The lease costs have varied since that time. I'd say we're, we're somewhere between 2 and 250. We're about 225 is, if I had to put a round estimate to it.
Thank you. And again, I was comfortable with those figures because it made sense to me to move toward that amount. It seemed like a reasonable amount of money, and the trade-off seemed somewhat similar to me in the early childhood center when we built that and said, hey, that makes sense, and this amount was actually smaller than the early childhood center. Now, again, going through this agreement, I think the present price for this terminal land, et cetera, is about 6.85. Is that about right?
That is correct.
And if we were to compare, like, the lease agreement and how you catch up on that, roughly, it would take us 30 years to catch up, and you get even point. So, I'm saying the increased cost, the length of time to regroup what we'd pay in the lease bothers me a lot, and that's why I'm not going to support this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, Mike, can I ask you a follow-up question? So, do you have, you know, I, we wrangle with this quite a bit, as you know, and I guess I'm just, if you could help me, you know, do you have any other ideas of alternative ideas that we can do, anything that crossed your mind?
Tell me more.
We've looked at a lot of sites prior to, you know, obviously, long prior to Sarah and I being on the board, and had many lengthy discussions, so I guess where I'm at is in weighing the pros and cons and the fact that, you know, we have, this is a duty that we have, you know, per the bond. So, I guess I'm looking for, I've been trying to find other alternative solutions to the situation at hand, and I personally haven't been able to, you know, find any, so I'm just, I'm wondering what would be your solution if you're going to vote no?
Yeah. And what I would say is this, like you've said, we've spent a lot of time on this and a lot of meetings on this, and I don't agree with that picture. What I compare it to, and from my frame of reference, was when we were dealing with the issue of the early childhood center, and, because they were kind of similar, and as you know, we spent a lot of time looking at alternative sites. Lake Elmo was one of those, and we spent a lot of time, and actually, we got to a point where we were kind of exhausted, you know? Where do you go next? And as I mentioned also, when this came up and became part of the bond issue, it wasn't like this was one of the early priorities. I believe Mr. Hepner mentioned it later and said, well, as long as we're at trying to correct a lot of things, why not attack the bus garage issue? So, I guess my perspective is different than yours in terms of the immediacy to make this decision, and I'm saying even the decision to build the early childhood center where it is right now was one that after we'd gone through, because we did turn down a site that environmentally, we liked the site, but environmentally it seemed too much of a problem to catch up, and after a lot of minds and continued searching, and might say it came out of nowhere, we picked the junior high site, and there were some adjustments. What I'm saying on this, and price is part of that, I'm saying I think it's too quick to make that decision.
The night we took the vote, for those of us who were on the board at that time, I remember Shelley and I making amendments around sports facilities, but I don't remember there being any conversation around the bus garage, so...
I think that's Mike's point, is that he was okay with that price.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe had it been 6.85 in the bond, maybe he would have questioned.
Yeah. I'm saying this is more than double.
Right, but we didn't, I guess what I'm trying to highlight is that we did not have, I don't think, identified location at that time.
Correct.
And I think that's when the board should have said, you know what, we need to, we know that we have to find a site, and we've been looking at sites now for how many years? It's been an ongoing...
I believe Mr. Bloom started right around the passage of the referendum. If they weren't, I would go with the passage.
So, it'd be May 2015.
May of 15 would be my best estimate.
We've looked at several, to my knowledge, that I've...
Yes, we have explored 15 in attendance area sites, and I believe three or four that we've looked like, looked at that are actually out of district, too.
Kristin, how is that compared to the early childhood? I didn't realize that that was a big ordeal because I wasn't on the board then. Is that comparable to what everyone went through with that?
I apologize, I was not in the district at that time. That was Dr. Queener.
Or 12 sites.
Okay.
So, Kristin, if, if, if we are to pass on this site, what, what is financially we're looking at for the district going forward without having this bus garage and holding on to the funds and looking for other sites? What will it cost us financially without the bus garage?
Where I would say immediately the financial impact will come is the, and you see it in all construction, and we've had the conversation even as it relates to Brookview, the longer we go, the higher construction costs go. And so, if we are looking at constructing our own facility, what might have been projected in, when, during the review and comment process in 2015, that information then is three years out of date, and what has happened to construction costs? That's first and foremost what comes to mind. Typically, things don't get less expensive, and same with land, quite honestly. That's first and foremost. We had talked in closed session about potential negative ramifications as far as the financing goes. From what I can see, we're not necessarily going to expose ourselves to that. I would continue to work through that. So, I think we might be okay in that area. To me, it comes down to, to construct a building even in '16 is going to look different in '16 than in '18.
How about with our lease of space and all of that?
So, where we run into lease of space, and we have, we have extended that until April 1st of '18, and I think we could probably get it until summer if we needed it. That land, to the best of my knowledge, is either for sale or will be put for sale, which then means that we would not have that opportunity to lease there anymore, and I am not familiar with a site that would be able to accommodate us in a leasing capacity, if not that site.
So, we'd have to lease again, and I don't see lease rates going down, they would probably go up.
Can you just clarify what you just said? I'm sorry, I think I misunderstood. Were you talking about the site that we're currently using?
As it relates to what? Just talking about the leases?
During Tom's question, we're leasing the site that we're at right now?
Yes.
Are you saying you're not clear if that sale, that piece of land is actually for sale?
I am saying that we have had discussions internally. I do not know if it's listed.
Okay. So, what was the original driving force behind this decision then, other than, as Mike mentioned, George had the suggestion that we, we consider a new location? Is there some other reason why we're needing to do this now?
It's not a big enough facility as it is, so when we discussed what goes into the bond, that was one of the suggestions, actually, Mr. Bloom brought forward before I did, and I just concurred with it. Here's, here's what scares me. I, I took a look, and I learned something about the current site that we're on. NSP owned the five-acre property between 1965 and 1978, when it was sold to Jim Junker of Junker Sanitation. In 1984, MPCA notified NSP that a number of drums were located at the site. Junker subsequently donated the property to the Trinity Lutheran Church in 1987. In 1988, NSP sponsored a service... In 1988, NSP sponsored a survey which visually located 14 drums. Pollution Control Agency requested NSP remove the drums or face superfund activity at that site. That was May of 1994. Upon excavation, each drum was inspected to determine its structural integrity, weight, and the status of its seal. On November 10th, 1994, 16 drums were excavated or otherwise collected at the site. Fifteen of the drums were found to be empty or contain small amounts of sand or water. Each of the 15 drums was missing a seal or was sufficiently corroded so it would not provide containment. In August of 1995, so about a year later, Pollution Control Agency did a study of the land that's there. In order to conduct a quanti, this is from their executive summary, "In order to conduct a quantitative risk assessment, the estimated exposure concentrations, soil concentrations to which receptors will be exposed, should represent a conservative estimate of the average exposure concentration. Their evaluation was based on potential toxic effects resulting from the exposure to chemicals of concern. The results of the assessment indicated that the estimated total excess cancer risk, based on the individual soil sample conservation, concentrations exceeded the acceptable target cancer risk level at numerous locations within the site boundaries for both unrestricted and recreational land use. Should be noted that the concentrations posing greater than," and this is where it gets into way more chemistry than I know, "concentrations posing greater than excess cancer risk for unrestricted land use would probably also pose an unacceptable excess cancer risk for a chronically exposed industrial worker. Soil concentrations posing greater than a 1 times 10 to the third power excess cancer risk for unrestricted use may also pose an excess risk for individuals exposed for only a relatively brief period of time. The noncarcinogenic evaluation suggested there are six sampling locations within the site boundaries that contain contaminants at concentrations that are of potential health When I, you know, I read that, and it's of course part of a much longer thing that Oak Park Heights has available, but my thought on reading that was, how do we get out of there as quickly as possible? And so I took a look at the finances, and you used 30 years times 200,000, I think, for part. Here's the way I went at it. What did we commit to a new bus garage? We committed 3.5. We sold New Heights for 1.3. Now, that'll be used for something. So in my thinking, well, let's take the 1.3 for the bus garage. That gets us to 4.8. Then if we're leasing for 10 years, I use the figure $200,000, that picks up the other 2 million, and that gets me to my 6.8 million. Now, I'm taking lease costs, I'm taking what the bond committed, and I'm taking New Heights' charge. But I get to a 6.8, and I'm satisfied that we're moving into a facility that's much better for our employees, not only health-wise, but just a much better facility. I think because of the bays, the mechanic bays that are already there, it's a better facility for the mechanics to work on buses. We know there are classrooms there that they don't have at the current site. So that was my thinking and the reason I will vote for it. I mean, all of that combined is kind of why I'm saying. I think we've looked at sites. We can't seem to find anything. When we do find what we consider to be a good site, some entity says, no, we don't want you here. Perfectly logical. I can understand a lot of folks doing that. But I'm satisfied that we can afford this site, and it's a better site for our buses and our workers.
One thing that I would like to add, and it's a financing piece that actually came across when we were renegotiating or negotiating the contract with Minnesota Central, is we had their busing prices, but we also entered into an agreement, and we actually need property to do that, of which they would pay, or a busing company would pay leasing cost to us. And so, yes, right now, we pay that, let's say, 200,000, 225,000 for that leased space, of which Minnesota Central does, they pay for that. So ultimately, let's just say it's zero to us. We pay no cost for that leasing space. The difference is, is once we own a space, we're now collecting that money annually, at least according to the agreement with Minnesota Central, into our system. So I don't know if that changes anybody's thinking, but that's, that's another way, is we go from, let's say, paying no leasing cost because they're contributing to receiving revenue, to help offset the costs of maintenance of the building, you know, debt of the building, and we wouldn't be taking out a debt payment. But it offsets our costs down the road. So then how many years can we lease that building and actually recover whatever we've invested into it? Just another way to look at it.
And what I've heard is, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Well, I was just going to say, that actually raises one of my questions, is have, what are we, do we have any estimated operational costs for managing this building? And who would cover that? I mean.
Again, the leasing revenue that we would receive would cover that, and then whatever the net gain is above that. So I want to say the agreement entered into with Min Central was close to 200,000. If it costs 40, 50,000 to, and in that agreement, there's nuances of which they pay certain fees and we pay certain fees. In addition to the rent payment, whatever the net gain is, it's no, honestly, it's no different than what we had with Washington School. There's expenses that go into running it, and you have a gross amount, you have a net amount. And so I, I mean, we could realistically net 100 to 150,000 a year.
Right.
I mean, that, I think that's very realistic to say, you know, again, I don't have all of the utility records and what it costs, and our purposes would be very different than what it was used for.
So it won't make as big of an impact. I had, had in my mind all the way along that it would save us 200,000 a year in the general fund, but that's not, probably, it's probably too high a number that I'm thinking.
Well, it, but it's just reversed. Again, it's not necessarily saving us the general fund, we're just now collecting revenue. It's not take, yes.
See, again, the part I look at this is I'm not opposed to keep looking. Obviously, even the fact that we're talking about this tonight, probably will get some publicity. And hopefully, what's going to happen, if I prevail, is that somebody's going to say, I got this wonderful piece of land at a wonderful price, and they're going to come forward. That may or may not happen. I'm saying where I disagree a little bit with Jennifer is, as these things go, I don't think we've been on it that long. I think the fact that you mentioned that the present owners of what we're using now are going to put theirs on the market, I think it's going to be harder to sell after what George read. But I hope that doesn't happen for the owners, but I'm saying that's the case. Again, you keep looking and finding, but I'm saying I'm also bothered because back in 2015, and that May, 3.5 looked a lot better to me. And, and I think this, this is a much, much bigger step. That's what I have trouble with. Again, we'll wait and see what the rest of the board decides.
And I, yeah, I'd like to say, it's, it's a lot of money, and it's, it's a concern. And I think we've, I do think we've been talking about it, and I've been personally wrangling with this for quite some time. I, you know, don't we have, isn't there a time limit with which we have to make a decision for what we said we're going to do in the bond? Isn't there, is it a three-year or five?
And we had talked about the negative arbitrage effect of not spending the money within three years, and that is what I had mentioned with Tom about what are the financing impacts? The thing is, we did have, and again, it's the nuance of the fin, of the finances, we did have the sale of a building in that. So are we using bond proceeds, or are we using the sale of Valley Crossing? Because the sale of Valley Crossing doesn't enter into the negative arbitrage conversation. I'm not, I'm not entirely certain yet. If we have that ability to make that distinction, I am researching that. As far as, do we have only three years to spend it right now to err on the side of where I believe the answer will come in? I would say no. I believe we have longer than that.
And can you speak a little bit to the, you've looked at many sites, and maybe speak for the sake of the public, what type of process that was?
Sure. And I'll stick to, if, if you will, I will stick to the properties that lie within District because those ones, just given proximity to what even Shelley had mentioned, what does it cost who run buses from any particular location? I would say of the 15 that we explored, proximity was a consideration. Areas that seemed to be challenging for us, quite honestly, was zoning. There is not a lot of industrial, zoned industrial property. And the two properties that we were discussing before, and one we had actually entered into a purchase agreement on, and the second, we were working with a property off of Stagecoach, we ran into zoning issues due to the various municipalities that we were dealing with. And so zoning seemed to be a very large piece of it. Where we were zoned appropriately, or thought we even had the potential to be zoned appropriately, then there, there might have been other caveats. They were, that property was being leased by someone else, and they had the right of first refusal. Size of the property is a consideration. We have, and honestly, the restrictions that the municipalities provides as far as previous surfaces that are allowed, because then that determines the acreage you have to buy, and is that acreage available to us? You know, can we get the, all of the employees' cars and the buses? Those were a lot of the conversations that were had as it relates to those properties. Then it, and then it came down to, I mean, it was even conversations about Central Stillwater. And you have a, you know, a stream of properties. Can we make it work? There was one actually right next to Central Services. You know, how nice would that be to just take over and do that? Well, then you have access points. You know, you're, you're dealing with road restrictions and stoplights and all of the things that Washington County and the safety care about. And is that even feasible? Let alone the, the size of the building? You know, can we get the wash bays on, or the mechanic's bays? All of those things seemed to be explored. And quite honestly, there were a few properties where there was land, the location was great. We don't believe we'd run into any municipality decision, and they just, quite frankly, weren't willing to sell to us.
Yeah, I just, and here's, and here's where, you know, with the ECFE building, because I, I know that was a huge, that was a challenging time, too. I, where I'm at is, I just don't see that there are a lot of options, and the zoning is a, that's a true reality that you have to face. And so just to drill you ever, ever so much more, a little bit more. So how long have you been looking at various sites? Years, how many?
Well, again, it started with Mr. Bloom, and the torch was handed, handed to me upon his retirement. So.
Okay.
We're, we are two-plus years in, two-plus real estate, two real estate brokers in.
Okay.
So we've had even different lenses coming from brokers.
Okay. Thank you.
So I would say I'm less decided than I was when I came in, just because I don't want to be on our current site. I feel like it's like a hot potato, that we need to be off, concerned about the price. I'm not sure what the best thing is. And now that we know that maybe we have longer than that, three years, it, does that change things? Would that, is there anything out there? That's the whole thing we don't know, right? Whether there's something out there. And it's a great piece of property. I just don't know. Do you know when we picked that three and a half million? Was it an arbitrary number, or did we think we could build on a site? Do you remember?
I, I was not a part of the process.
The only thing I would say, and George and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, I think Dennis was initially very, very optimistic that it was covered. And, and quite honestly, George, and I, I mean that as a compliment, I think even when you proposed the idea, I, I thought it was a very good one. It made good sense compared to what else was in the bond issue. It made sense. I'm just, the escalating price bothers me in some of those. And again, I know it's a lot of work on your part in contacting realtors, but in my simple mind, it seems like a relatively short time, so.
And I, again, the amount of work it takes is, that doesn't matter. I mean, it is taxpayer dollars, and it does not matter. I, I just don't, the properties that I've seen, and honestly, even exploring properties that we currently possess, I don't see it, an extreme amount of variation if there is any ability to do.
Kristin, would you clarify? Because I think some of our audience took your comment as taxpayer dollars, it does not matter, maybe in the wrong way. Could you, I think your intention was different than that.
Correct. I will take as much time as absolutely humanly necessary to make sure it is the best deal for our public and our taxpayers.
Thank you.
Well, and I think that it's a different conversation if the vote was before us and we had only maybe explored two or three, or even a half a dozen sites. But when I hear that there's 15 sites that we've explored in terms of being what's a good fit for the district in 24 months, that's, you know, every month and a half that we're looking at, something that simply has not, you know, flushed out. And I think that, I wish I was as optimistic as Mike, that someone might call us and say, I've got this amazing property that's going to fit your needs. I, I think that, and we've had hours of closed session discussion about this, that the due diligence has been done about the viable options that currently exist. And I think that the three and a half million, while that might have been what was projected, I think that the board at the time, myself included, maybe then should have taken into account that since we didn't have an identified property, that was a risk that we were exposing ourselves to. And that's on, you know, I'll own that for my, my part of the vote. So I think that, given what is before us now, and the information that we have before us, in terms of what is first and foremost best for our employees, and that's a huge consideration for me. And so I don't think you can quantify that. And so I do support this. I feel that we have been doing this, this, this study, this, this work, and examining that this really is the best fit for, for the needs of the district based on the information that we have in front of us today.
I think for me, this is a question of our priorities. We have a voter-approved amount of money to spend on a bus transportation facility of 3.5 million dollars. I, I can see that that might not have been quite enough. Maybe we under-projected what the actual cost would be. But to go to almost double that seems really irresponsible. I mean, we had a very fruitful discussion at our very last meeting to decide whether or not we were going to spend $500,000 on OPEB. And we decided we were going to be respectful of the taxpayers' dollars and not ask for that. And now we're essentially choosing to spend, you know, 3.8, you know, almost 3.5 million dollars more than what they said they were okay with us spending, without asking. And that money, and that money is, is building money. That's capital that can be used to, that's money that could be used for other facilities, such as, in addition to Lake Elmo, we could add on to Valley Crossing if we needed. We would have that money sitting there for any contingencies that we might see in the near future, instead of spending it on this extraordinarily expensive piece of land. Now, in looking at this piece of land, I agree, it's beautiful, it's spectacular, it's a great, it's a, you know, it's easy access in a lot of ways. It's a beautiful building, it's brand new. I mean, I can see the appeal of that. But I, I mean, I would love to live in a $5 million house, too, and I'm not going to go buy that because I can't afford that. So at some point, we have to decide what are our priorities? What do we value? And are we really going to sit here and spend almost $7 million of the taxpayers' money? When we know very well, we could hand back that 3.5 if we wanted to. Or we could save it and make an addition, or put it towards another building, which we may very well need in the, in the very near future, because I, I think all of us know that most every single one of our buildings is quite full right now.
Sarah, just a correction, and I apologize if I misunderstood you. We cannot use the 3.5 for additions to our other buildings. The bond language specifically stated it was to be used for a bus garage, and that it would be a material change.
But I thought you just said that we could consider it, consider the.
I said I was looking into that option.
Well, okay. Well, okay.
And, and we don't want to add on to Valley Crossing because we don't own it anymore?
No, I think she meant Brookview.
Oh, okay.
I meant Brookview.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I did misspeak. I meant Brookview.
And Sarah, I absolutely.
Would, would the audience please be quiet? We're trying to have our board meeting. Go ahead.
I absolutely agree with you, Sarah, in terms of being very judicious in terms of looking at the priorities and what we're, what we're spending the money on, absolutely. What I'm struggling with is the conundrum of what other options might exist out there. And if there's, if we, if the board ultimately decides not to invest and, and go with the bus garage, then what, what, what other alternatives do we have?
I agree with you. I think, I think it does seem like there has been a tremendous amount of time and effort and work put into this, and I really do respect that. And it does seem like we are in a really tough spot. This, this site obviously has some challenges. I guess I just feel like there's, there's reason to believe that we could take some more time, and there's no reason why we have to leave this site at this moment. I think that we could, you know, respect the community and respect the community's dollars by giving it a little bit more time and continuing to see if there isn't a better choice.
I think, though, if you, you want to respect the community's dollars, you give it back to them. You say, look, we can't find a spot. Why hold on to $3.5 million? That's the taxpayers'.
I agree.
That's the point. So you can't say, you know, well, let's go find another spot. We've looked for another spot. They've looked for another spot. Either the communities that we thought would want it have said no. There's a huge distinction between an early childhood family center school and a bus garage. People don't want buses firing up in the morning, and I can understand that, I wouldn't want it either. So you're, you're left with this decision of either, you know, you say, you want to spend money on six, for $6 million for a bus garage, and you give back the money to the taxpayers. It's their money. It's not our money. We give it back.
I agree.
Or you say, you know what, we're trying to save $200,000 out of the budget, which is going to go up every year, because we're always, you know, we have other things we always want to spend money on, whether it's class size, whether it's special programs. Here's a way to do it, it's going to cost you $6 million. Again, we got a dollar, you can spend it here, you can spend it there. You know, I, I don't know what to do. But I, I'm not going to sit here and say, there's another site out there, because there isn't another site out there. We've looked, people have said no, we've gone to community meetings, they have all said no. This was probably the last best chance. If this doesn't work, I'm saying give it back to the taxpayers.
Yeah. Tom, I'm, I'm comfortable, and I've seen it done, where districts have turned money back to the taxpayers. There is a value to that. It does build a tremendous amount of credibility. And I've seen it, and I've seen that done. The, the difference, I would say, is this, and, and again, I've been accused other times of being over-optimistic, and, and I, I can live with that. I, I wouldn't rush out tomorrow. Like I said, even in fact, I think that we're talking about this publicly. I did not think that we would end up at the junior high site, but it was, all of a sudden it was there, and somebody said, wow, this is a great idea, and I think that was Dr. Queener. And I give him credit for it. Again, off the top of my head, I don't have an alternative like that. Somebody in the community may, or there might be other ideas. So I'm saying first, I don't think this is something that has to be decided tonight. On the other hand, if we get to the point where we can't, we don't, I'm very comfortable with giving that money back to the taxpayers. It's their money.
And absolutely, I don't, I don't disagree with anything that either you or Sarah, anyone has said about the money, absolutely. And I feel that morally, now that we have information that we might not have had before, are we going to prioritize jeopardizing our employees' well-being and health? So I think that discussion should be on the table. And I'm not comfortable saying that, just because it's, you know, a smaller amount of, of, of people that would be affected, that, I think that we also have an ethical and moral obligation to look at that and enter that into the, the conversation in terms of how we, how we decide going forward. Because people's health is something that I don't feel like you can put a price tag on or quantify in a financial sense.
Which I guess I haven't felt like anybody has been trying to do. I think it's more about, do we do it now? Or do we, do we try to look further? I think for me, the biggest rub from the very first time we've met has always been the extra money and where that comes from. Should it be spent on one of our school buildings, which will help student learning? I think that's always been my struggle. Does Lake Elmo need, we know that it needs help in that building because there's so many additions. You know, is there, is there a better way to spend the extra money than on a bus garage? I think that's where my greatest struggle has been. Because I, I would love to say, yes, we need this bus garage. Is it our number one priority? I think that's what we have to decide.
Yes, I agree. I mean, when we had high school teachers coming to us, asking for some adjustments to the building construction project, they were told that there wasn't any money to add additional walls or make any adjustments or flexibility in the space. When the parents from Lake Elmo came and said that they need more special ed appropriate playground equipment in their building, they were, they were told to try to get together with their PTA and come up with the money, and they were told there isn't money right now. They've been put off and put off and put off. When the gate parents get moved to the junior high, to Stillwater Middle School, they still haven't been told for sure if there's going to be a playground or not. I don't know if there's going to be a playground or not, but I don't think a playground costs nearly as much as this. I think there are lots of things that people have been told, no, there's not money for. And if there's, all of a sudden, $3.3 million sitting here that we can go buy this piece of land, I, I'm, I'm absolutely shocked. I think that we should not, I do not approve of this plan. I think that we should stay exactly where we are and continue to use the spot that the bus, bus barn is now. I think it's working fine. Are there issues? Yes, they should be addressed as much as we can, and perhaps we keep looking, I don't know. But I think Tom is exactly right. I think we should proceed to giving this money back to the community.
Are we?
$3.5 million should go back to the.
I was just going to ask if we, is there any value in tabling it? Or do we want to just have a decision tonight? Either way?
I want to have a decision tonight either way. I mean, we're here, let's have the decision. That's our job. Vote how you believe it should go, and you let the chips fall where they may, and you move forward.
I, I would support tabling. I, I'm just very uncomfortable that we are having the information, if I'm understanding it right, I'm not a doctor, so I don't want to at all interpret that I'm able to, to read and synthesize what you read, George. But I'm very uncomfortable, based on what I thought I heard, that we are going to continue knowingly have employees on a site that could not be in the best interest of their health.
Well, and that's, can you go back over that? Because I felt like it, and I, I don't want them there. But was it excessive time spent in industrial-type job? Do you remember?
Well, the length, now, keep in mind, this is 1995, and what I found out in, in reading was it was never used as a dump. It was used as a mechanics lot. So there was, what, what Eric Johnson at Oak Park told me was, there was antifreeze in the ground, there was oil in the ground. That's what it was used for. When they had the argument about continuing Stefan lease there, and Mayor Bodett was at, Oak Park Mayor at the time, he argued because of the soil and the groundwater going into that pond that's, that's behind there. But here's, here's, and again, I'm picking lines out of a fairly lengthy report. "The results of the assessment indicated that the estimated total excess cancer risk, based on the individual soil sample concentrations, exceeded the acceptable target cancer risk level at numerous locations within the site boundaries for both unrestricted and recreational land use." That's the first sentence in a paragraph generally would be your theme sentence. At the end of this thing, at the end of the same paragraph, "It should be noted that the concentrations posing greater than a 1 times 10 to the fourth excess cancer risk for unrestricted land use would probably also pose an unacceptable excess cancer risk for a chronically exposed industrial worker. Soil concentrations posing greater than a 1 times 10 to the third excess cancer risk for unrestricted use may also pose an excess risk for individuals exposed for only a relatively brief period of time." Again, I'm, I'm picking two lines out of, and I don't remember how long the report was, I didn't bring the whole thing tonight, but I read those lines and I got scared, just frankly, yeah.
Well, and again, what's the date on that, George?
That was August of 1995. That's when the study was done.
Yeah, I'm saying it's a little overdue in, in terms of addressing the situation.
Well, you know why I addressed it at this time.
Sure. But, but the point that I'm feeling is, like Sarah said, I think it needs to be addressed if it's a safety hazard. Suppose the motion carries tonight, are we going to be in there when school starts? Is that where the buses are going to come out of? Is the news setting?
No. There, there would need to be the remediation, that's part of the agreement with the asphalt and the lighting and the block heaters. I would anticipate that we would not be in that building until spring.
Which would mean that regardless, those workers there would be exposed. And, and so what would seem prudent to do at this point is to have somebody who's qualified, whoever does that sort of thing, go in, whether you call in OSHA or, or whatever, and you say, is there a risk of workers? And, and what is that risk?
So that would lead to the suggestion of tabling it and, and asking for an updated study, because I, I would support that as well.
Yeah, because I'm saying regardless, there, whether it's six months, or a year, or, or a day, we want to make sure, as, as several of you have done, and, and I think that's fair, is to say, let's make sure it's a safe environment.
And if that's, if that's your main reason for voting for or against this, that makes sense. If that's not your main reason, then it doesn't make as much sense.
Well, I'll be, I'll tell you what.
Well, if it's money, if it's finances, that, that the main argument is, then no matter what this says, doesn't make any difference. If it's, yeah, it is appropriate to spend that money, or no, I don't want to spend that money, what I read makes no difference then.
But regardless of what I'm saying, depending on how this motion goes tonight.
Yep.
If you're going to continue to use this site and our workers are exposed.
Right. I understand that, and I think it's maybe different than what the issue is that's on the table right now.
Agreed. But I'm saying, I, I'm like Sarah, I think it's got to be addressed.
Yeah, well, there's no doubt.
But there's a difference between, I think, in expediting it versus saying, we're going to hold off indefinitely, and, you know, employees, if you're there another six months or another six years, we just need to wait till they're the perfect site. And I would think that we need to be really deliberate and really clear and transparent about what are we willing to prioritize more? And what's really at the crux. I mean, you're doing a really good job about dancing around the issue here, but I think we have to just really call it out and say, I am not comfortable having any, any person in an environment that could be, put them in jeopardy of their health. And so I think that if, if it means that we can get them in a, in a different location sooner, then that is what I'm going to prioritize.
Could I, could I make a motion to table, to table this until we have, yes, the finances are, are very bothersome to me, the price is very bothersome, but could I make a motion to table until we have an updated study? The study that we've been working off of is 20 years old. And I don't know what the kind of length of time that would entail, but I feel, I don't feel comfortable voting on this tonight.
I second that.
Any discussion on the motion to table?
I do have a quick question. I think in our closed session in discussing this situation, there was a Phase One study done on this property, and I don't remember it being that old. Is that the one that George is referencing now? Is, are they, we're talking about two different studies? Or is that one and the same with the one that you presented to us earlier?
I don't know George's material. I know that there was a Phase One that was done by the owner. I don't recall the year being 95. I want to say it was 97. But it might have been a little bit later than that. So this would require our, and, and again, so you know, and, and so you can provide direction should you go that way. Are you asking me to have our environmental company do a Phase One, a Phase Two? My guess is that's going to take months. Phase One is essentially the materials available and interviewing, and then Phase Two is actually digging in the ground and processing that information. And, and we will be using dollars. I mean, I, again, ballpark of 10 to 30 might be the cost.
And those would be capital funds, right? Just to be clear.
We're not purchasing the property.
It's like something that would fall under a long-term facilities-type situation? Or it's not talking about operational funds, right? Yes.
Well, here's the problem. One, we don't own the property.
We don't own the property.
So you're not going to be able to say to ABC owner, hi, we're coming in and we're going to do a Phase One or a Phase Two on your property. Second of all, I'm not going to support that, I'm not going to incur that expense for this. You know, I, I'm comfortable tabling it to get more information, but I'm not going to do any more research on that property at this point.
I kind of agree with you, Tom, because it's not our property. We're releasing it.
Okay, so that, so I understand that, but so what kind of research would you be looking for?
I guess I'll take a, I mean, I understand what George is reading from. I'm not, I'm not sure if, as a result of what the MPCA said, someone didn't go out and remediate the site, or, or do what. I think that's kind of what the Phase One would tell me as to what the condition is right now. I don't know what the date is, but I'm, it's troublesome what happened back in the 80s or 90s. Not sure if that still is the condition now. Maybe the owner remediated some of these issues, and we don't have that problem anymore. But the bottom line for me is, I don't, I'm, I'm not interested in continuing to look for other sites. I, I feel that we have looked and looked and looked. So if this site doesn't go forward at some point, may not, I'm, I've said, I want to give the money back to the taxpayers. It's, that's just where I'm at with this, so. But I'm comfortable tabling it so that everyone else can get further information on that, and we can make a decision. I don't know if, if Skanel will even keep the offer open at that point. That's the other risk we, we run, is they're going to say, you know, we'll look at other people, but that's just the nature of the beast when you have a public body buying something, so.
Yeah.
I'd like to just take a vote on tabling it and see where we're at.
You going to call that question?
Well, I guess the question would be, you know, I understand tabling it is a good idea, it gives us a little bit more time, but to do what? Like, at what point do we bring it back up again? What do we, I mean, at some point, Kristin needs to have direction from us on what to do.
Well, my understanding with tabling is to be able to look at our present property to make sure if, not our present property, but we're releasing, to see if it's as bad as that report says, and how quickly we need to get our people off of there.
Well, for me, tabling it, what it means is, someone needs more information. Whether that information is out there or is going to help them make a decision at some point in the future, it seems pretty personal as to what one person may need versus the other. I, I'm not interested in tabling this very long. I would think we'd want it to come back up at the next board, board meeting. Or, or deny the table and let's vote tonight.
Yeah, but, but one thing I think we, we want to know, and I, I understand the arguments, it's not our property, but they are our employees. And so whatever it takes.
They are our employees.
Well.
It's a contract.
I hear you.
They drive our kids those.
But, but I know, but the, but the study goes into our decision-making process. So for me, if, if it doesn't matter, it shouldn't matter. To me, it matters. It, it does matter. And if we're looking at a 20-year-old study to try to make a decision on the current parcel of land that we're using, I think it matters. So we either, we either want to believe a 20-year-old study, or we don't care about it, but I do think it matters. I think it has to weigh into, into this decision, so.
And Jennifer, I agree, but what I want to know, Tom held out the possibility, and I think. I think it's quite possible, that the present owner or that something was done to make it safe. The study didn't go away, but what we don't know.
Part of the point that.
We don't know that.
So we need more information on the current condition of this property, not based on information that's coming from 1995. So that's one thing we could try to do. And we also, I would like to know what the bus company thinks about all of this. Do they have an opinion? You know, do they have thoughts? Do they know about all of this? Are they willing to take that risk themselves? I don't understand, I don't know anything about where they're at.
Kristin, and again, I don't want you to do that now, but a question I would have too is even if he's going to put the property on the market, those are concerns anybody's going to have.
We've got a motion on the floor to table, so without any further comment or questions, all those in favor of tabling, and I guess you still don't know what we want you to do with it, but we're tabling to.
We're tabling the motion to sell the property is basically what we've tabled.
To the September board meeting or?
To the September board meeting. And we'll get whatever information we can between now and September. Is that?
Yeah, I would also, yeah, I would also like to encourage the community to weigh in on this.
Yeah, well.
If they have thoughts.
Yeah, I think one thing you could do, and without commissioning a study, because it's not our land, is talk to the owner and let them respond. Because that's pretty serious stuff that's been quoted tonight, and perhaps they dealt with it. And that's a missing piece we haven't gotten.
And the rationale for me requesting the table is that I, again, that we're working off, you know, that matters to me, that information matters to me. It's old information, and if there's a possibility that we could buy this parcel at a lower, a much lower price point, and if it is a safe piece of property, then that would possibly be more prudent for us. But again, I don't feel that we know that right now, and that's why I am requesting the table.
Yeah.
Okay, so what do you want Kristin to do between now and, say, the September meeting?
Well, I don't know that I want to give you some specific parameters on a time. Do you feel that you could get us some updated information on that property so we can make a more educated decision on this in a short amount of time? You know, do you have any? If we are not commissioning a study, it comes down to research of the information that's available. And if what George has read and whatever I had provided in the email about when the Phase One was done, if that is the most recent, that's all I will have available to me, other than talking to the property owner to see if any work was done. In absence, can I do that by the September meeting? I most certainly can get my hands on either a study that was done since and talk to the property owner, if one exists, but beyond that, if we're looking to commission, which I believe I'm hearing, we're not interested in that, that couldn't be done by September.
I'm comfortable with what you just said.
So am I.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor of tabling to the September meeting with what you just heard, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Look at you, you loner.
It's been a long time, hasn't it?
Thank you.
Thanks, Kristin.
All right, I think we've got.
School board membership.
School board memberships, and I'm believing we're looking at three memberships. We have the Minnesota School Board Association. Looks like that one's going up about 220 bucks. We have the Minnesota State High School League membership. There is no fee for that membership, but board action is required. And we have AMSD, which looks like it's going down about $70 or so. I would make a motion to approve the district memberships for 2017, 2018. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Wait, 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 there's a hint up over here. I would like to amend the motion. I support all of those organizations that we're in. What I would like to amend the motion to do is to take a look and investigate C Membership. C stands for Schools for Equity and Education. It's an organization that we belong to for a very long time, years, and I'm quite familiar with it, and I think several board members are as well, in terms of cost and offerings and what's available. And I don't think an investigation would take very long, and we could gather some pros, cons, and have that ready by the September meeting as well. And I'm quite willing to investigate, or if others want to do that.
Mike, are you thinking that this would be in addition to our current memberships?
Yes.
And how would this be an additional benefit above and beyond the three that we already?
What C does, basically, the organization, their main mission is the difference, not so much in students, they're concerned about that in terms of equity among students, but they're also concerned about certain districts are more advantageous in terms of state funding than others. So that's been one of their primary causes as well. I was, for a very long time, four or five years, maybe a little less or a little more, a representative to C, so I saw them work very closely. Where they were very, very effective is as a lobby group, and they performed a lot of services for our district. Two years ago, maybe three years ago, when we were pushing for QCOM, it was their staff that really arranged for most of our board members to meet with legislators, and they set up a lot of logistics there. A lot of people sitting up here were involved in that. They have a very, very effective staff, particularly two people. One who's in the trenches did that by the name of Deb Griffith. They also have a very perceptive, very effective executive director by the name of Brad Lindell, and Brad's worked closely with us. And I think I could bring back some information that shows it. They're similar in some ways and also very different from me at MSD, and I've tried to go to both and see them. They're just different personalities. I think there's more of a board representation in C, but maybe that's my bias. They all put on a lot of in-service for the members. And the meetings in C particularly are open to any board member, so they can have one person there or they can have over a quorum who sit there and take it in, and they'll bring a lot of times legislative candidates, gubernatorial candidates. They played a very strong role with a lot of other educational leaders in terms of public lands and the administration of that, because that was potential funding for schools. I mean, those are the kinds of efforts they have gotten involved in. But I think I could bring back, or in the meanwhile, and I'm willing to do that, others could, or if it's more appropriate, the place it was, somebody else, please do that, but information for board members to look at and think about. And that's why I did not propose it as a membership tonight.
Okay, why don't we do it this way? Why don't we vote on this one?
Well, that's, I was going to suggest, why don't we just, I mean, I don't get the sense, and I may be wrong, that anyone's objecting to these. Maybe we could pass these and then add for the September, seeing if C would go.
Yeah, and I just thought this was the appropriate place, so that's why I mentioned.
Okay, all those in favor of approving district memberships as listed for 2017-18, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye, pose. Okay, and then, do you want to take a look at C and give us pros and cons?
I think one of you, it's your decision.
Well, since you brought it up, you're in charge of pros and cons.
And if anybody else has a strong interest or wants to help and get involved, please just let me know. I welcome any assistance.
Well, I remember when the board opted out of it at the recommendation of our last superintendent, because it was my understanding that there was so much duplicative services and versus the, you know, the cost. So I'd just be interested, yes, to see what ancillary supplementary services beyond what these three are providing, particular, well, maybe not the high school league, but particularly MSD and MSBA, beyond what those organizations provide if we are going to invest that kind of money into another organization.
Okay, we have board member reports. First is the superintendent report.
All right, thank you. Transitions, we are well underway to having teachers back in our buildings. We expect to be having the occupancy, certificate of occupancy by our due date on August 14th. We already have teachers in some of our buildings that have been cleared and cleaned. We have cleaning crews in the new facilities and the places where there's been a lot of construction. Our last piece of construction seems to be the brick wall in a partial wing of the middle school, over at Stillwater Middle School. So we expect teachers to be in, students to be in. We are having a grilling for our custodians tomorrow because they have been, and our tech staff, because they've been working their tails off trying to get everybody in and on time. So for appreciation for them, we're gathering them tomorrow for a brat barbecue. We also have been meeting with our principals, directors, and leadership teams and our teachers to look at our data for our students and really put the children's faces behind that data and work with them on PLCs. And we're having a lot of conversations about why we're doing this work and what's important. And the teams are coming together and putting together site improvement plans and looking at professional development and where they want to grow together as teams for this year. So they've been doing a great job with that. That's it.
Thank you. Board chair report, I just have two quick things. As one of the board members that attended the MSBA summer seminar last Monday, and in your packet, there is three sets, there are three sets of handouts. One has to do with the school board self-evaluation. I think we've talked about that before. There's some information in here, and we may want to, going forward, and we can actually talk about this maybe when we work with Mary Sikoni, to take a look at that board evaluation in the near future. There's one about an equity dashboard presentation, which is, I think, kind of similar to our student results policy sheet, our measure sheet. This is a little bit briefer, and from what the speakers talked about, a number of districts are starting to use this. I think there's a sample copy in that. And then there's a handout from a presentation that was done on ESSA, and there are some dates in here for other ESSA meetings going forward, along with a kind of a cheat sheet. It's called Decisions Document, and it talks a little bit about some of the areas that ESSA will cover. So certainly take a look through those. I don't know that my notes are any better than what these three things are, but certainly MSBA can help you out if you want more information. Second thing is, I just wanted to call attention. I was able to play golf in a basketball fundraiser about a week ago, and I was talking to another alumni, Stillwater alumni, who played the day before yesterday in a wrestling fundraiser. And the reason I call attention to that is, I think sometimes we're under the impression that a lot of the uniform costs or supply costs that go to athletics is all paid for by the district. And these fundraisers, I think I heard 151 people were playing in the basketball fundraiser, and I think I heard 171 in the wrestling fundraiser. Quite a number of people, there's a couple individuals in each one who goes out and gets sponsorships, and they raise a lot of money for those programs. So I just kind of wanted to call your attention to the fact that those things are done for athletics. I know music has a big garage sale each year to raise funds for there. So a lot of parents and community members are out raising funds for these programs in addition to supporting our schools by sending our kids, their kids here. So that's it. Board member reports. Start down there.
I have nothing.
Okay, Jennifer?
Okay. I have a few things. So the Gardens of Light Tour, I was just looking up, so that was July 29th, and that was the proceeds, Go to Mental Health programming at Oakland Junior High. It was their first run at this, and they raised $1,000. So just wonderful turnout and hoping that that grows. Just a plug for our partnership plan friends, the Boohoo Yahoo is going to be Monday, August 28th, and just a really fun event for parents as they kick their kids out of the house. I'm kidding, but a celebration for the first day of school, but.
Boohoo Yahoo.
Yeah, Boohoo Yahoo.
Some people might be sad.
That's right. And I appreciate George's comments. I was going to make a shameless plug for the SAH, the Stillwater Area High School Rummage Sale, which is September 23rd, and that is the single only fundraiser for the entire music department at the Stillwater Area High School. So it's a huge undertaking, and it's choir, band, and orchestra. So just put that in your calendar, save your stuff, and maybe help join the cause for our kids. Thank you.
I guess I was disappointed that they put that last block above Pony Stadium, because I really enjoyed telling people why that was there. So that ended as of that block, so.
Did you make stuff up?
I said it was designed that way. We didn't have enough money to fill in the blanks.
Paul?
Let's see, today I attended the Coalition to Increase Teachers of Color and American Indian Teachers of Minnesota Conference. This is the second annual one, and I just wanted to recognize a parent who was very instrumental in testifying before the legislature in the last session during committee hearings and really played a huge part in passing, helping the passage of some of these provisions and bills that will make a real impact to help increase a more diverse teaching force. And that is Michelle DeZeele. She's a very active parent and has been just a real ally in this effort, so thank you for that. And yes, what Jen said, both I had the chance to do the Garden of Light Tour, which was amazing, and thank you for all the hosts that graciously opened up their home and also involved with the music rummage sale. So thank you for taking that on again, Jen. And just wanted to, in case any students are out there watching, just let you know that we're thinking of you, and as you prepare for the upcoming school year, wish you all the best, and all the teachers and staff that are working hard on their behalf, so thank you. I have nothing.
Mike?
A couple things. Again, I'm not quite sure where to start. Number one, I saw a book that was advertised a couple weeks ago and contacted George, and he had also seen the ad, and it's called Measuring What We Do in Schools: How to Know If What We're Doing is Making a Difference. I do know the author. I've read her materials before. In fact, it's been quite a while since I read her last story. She's had a lot in between, but I haven't. And so I have two copies, one I'm going to read. If any other board member wants to take a look at a copy of this, it is available. And like I said, the second copy, anybody who wants to, just see me afterwards, and I'll share that. It's described, she provides a roadmap of how to conduct comprehensive, system-wide evaluations of programs and processes, the tools needed to obtain usable pertinent information, and how to use the data to expand teacher and administrator's data-informed decision-making focus. Now, that's the technical side. She's kind of the guru, and this is not just test scores, it's other assessments, anything from portfolio to works of art, et cetera. But I haven't read this yet. But I haven't read this yet, but if it is the type of things that I've seen her use in the past, it will be worth your time. So see me if anybody's interested in that. And there's a couple copies there. Secondly, like George, I attended the MSB, the Minnesota School Boards Association Conference on Monday. I thought it was one of the better conferences I've gone to in a long time. And I think George and I both saw a woman work with the group and, and how she approached the world, and, and it's hard to believe somebody can stand before a couple hundred people for two hours and keep them spellbound, and she did. And so she was very, very effective, and I thought it was time well spent. If you wanna know more about what she said or did, see George and myself, we want to. Another highlight of that conference that was particularly beneficial is Tom Melcher. Tom Melcher is kind of the guru for school finances, and he gave us lots of graphs, lots of statistics on school finance. And I shared part of that with Paul tonight. I went on site, I can't find this posted anywhere, so I can't say to you, gee, go get it electronically. I don't see it. But if anybody is interested in getting a copy, I'm sure if I ask Barb, she'll make copies for you. But I'm saying it's extremely meaty. There's a lot of very insightful perceptions that he has, and, and people keep praying that he stays around and shares his expertise, because he's the best at what he does for Minnesota, and it's pretty phenomenal. I went to Bill Morris's presentation. I'm just grateful that we're not going off for a levy this year, because it, it sounds like, boy, it's got tougher. And so Morris, as always, is pretty perceptive of where voters are at and what are, are the trends and what's the feedback they're getting in surveys. So I found that worthwhile. I also got another presentation that I listened to the Minnesota Department of Ed talk about the regional meetings they're gonna be holding, what they're gonna submit to the federal government for funding. So if anybody's interested in that, please let me know. And then George and I both sat through the school board evaluation forum, which was useful. The last thing I wanna mention, and, and it's, it's relevant, and I'm not quite sure how much is saying, how much not to say, so I will do my best to be brief, but I'm not good at that, so I'll work on it. But first of all, construction update. I did, we did have our last meeting for 916 at Pancalo, and it's by the machine shed, brand-new school building for Level 4 students, and it's phenomenal. It's beautiful. The 916 has another facility like this called Carter Blue that's over by Blaine. This one is going to be more useful for us for kids at South Wash or, or kids at North St. Paul or kids at Stillwater. One of the things that stood out, and I sent you some literature on this, is their playground. And the school, their theme they're playing with is the arts. And so when you went to their playground, you looked at it first, and then you said, what is this? And they had an instrument that was hung up. It looks like a xylophone, and kids go play, and depending on the parts they play with, it makes a different sound. And then they had another area that was like, it was almost like big bongo drums. And they had all different kinds of instruments that way, and it was pretty cool. I, I didn't get to play, but I got to observe a little bit, and it was very, very creative. Again, the architects were BWBR, and they did a wonderful job with Carter Blue. They did a wonderful job in terms of creativity. So if you get an opportunity, which isn't very common because of, of the kids they serve, please take advantage of it, because it's, it's a very interesting facility. And most important, Carter Blue has proven, makes a difference in kids' behaviors. So I mean, the data that they've collected, boy, it shows that it has made a significant difference before and after with the kids who've worked in that facility. So I share that with you. Also, I'd like to say this, that we had the superintendent's evaluation, and Superintendent Hayes is outstanding. She's done a wonderful job. She's been, I believe, in 916 for almost 18 years, so that's a long tenure by almost anybody's standards. I think it's been that long. We also did approve a contract for her that night and, and for other administrators, and I've included parts of that in your packet. If you have questions or comments, please share those with me, you know.
There was one question I had. When I read it, is that what was approved? Because it was more like what she was asking for.
They approved almost exactly what she was asking for.
Wow.
Now, Tom, I was in the minority.
Yeah. I mean, the equal allowances?
I thought it was way too high. And again, the point is, because it was a discussion item and some false information was given, they may do a revote on that. That's speculation on my part, but I thought it was way above the norm, and, and that was information that was provided after. And that's why I sent it to you and I shared it with you, because you deserve to know that. And I did not vote for that. It had nothing to do with performance, because like I say, I think her and her team do a wonderful job, but I thought it was excessive, and I said it at the time, and that's not a conclusion I reached easily. And so if you have questions or comments or wanna voice things, please do.
Thank you for that. Thanks, Mike.
Also, they talked about their organizational chart, their new purchasing policy, employment contracts. They did, like us, we have a lot of those too. They had several employees that retired, and they represented 71 years of service. That's always impressive, and you hate to lose people who are that valuable. So anyway, that's a quick down and dirty. I'm sure I forgot things, but I always do, so.
Okay, are there any working group reports?
I have a brief one. The, the policy working group is very, very close to nailing down our time where we're gonna have a standing meeting, and we're just gonna kick out the, the statute-related. I, I'm gonna, I'll admit, I did not know prior to our retreat with Mary Sicconi that we can pick out some of these statute-related policies, so we're just gonna go through like 500 by the now. We're just getting it done between now and the end of the year.
I'd like to be there for that.
So thank you.
Could I get a motion to adjourn?
A second.
First, second, all in favor signify by saying aye raising your hand. Aye, pose.